Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. This May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Lake Oswego Redevelopment Agency is now called to order. Ms. Familian, will you please call the roll?
Chair Buck.
Here.
Board members, Verdic.
Here.
Raf.
Here.
Afghan.
Here.
Corrigan.
Here.
Wendlin.
Here.
Mabup.
Yeah.
All right. And now, everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats, and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. Our first item of board business today is a review of the urban renewal plans in the Foothills area. We welcome Sadoro Sin, the redevelopment manager here, to give us an update. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair.
I don't know if your microphone's on.
Is it on?
There we go.
There we go. All right. Thank you. So this afternoon, this is a council initiative to review the urban renewal plans, including the Foothills area. And so this is that first step towards that end, and staff will be seeking direction from the board on how to proceed with those plans, including the Foothills as well. So I'm going to start off with a quick PowerPoint presentation, kind of give you the history of urban renewal, and talk specifically about some of the projects in the two existing districts and the Foothills Urban Renewal District that we had at one time. So the redevelopment agency was created in nineteen seventy-nine to manage urban renewal in Lake Oswego. And ORAS four fifty-seven provides the authority for cities to create urban renewal agencies and plans and things like that. And what's important about the urban renewal plans is that they're developed to address blight in communities. And blight is pretty broadly defined, and it could be underutilized properties, properties under just repair and things like that. And so also within the plan, it talks about what's the structure of the organization. And in this case, the city council acts as the redevelopment agency board. The city manager is the executive director, and the city attorney is the Laura, legal counsel. The other thing, the planning plans include our projects, what are the costs of those projects, what's the maximum indebtedness, how much can you actually spend in that plan on those projects, and then also, when will that district close? And the plan itself is funded through tax increment financing. And here's just a quick graph on tax increment financing. And on the one axis, you've got the number of years. And in this example, you've got year zero and then year twenty-five, which is the extent of the plan year. And then you've got the dollars that could be accrued over that time, up to ten million dollars. And so when an urban renewal district is created, that frozen tax base is frozen at year zero. And over the years, the property, the assessed property values increase. And that increment piece is what the redevelopment district gets from that. And so in this example, the frozen tax base is at two million. Those taxing districts will continue to receive their share of that two million dollars over the twenty-five-year period. That increment in the blue area is what the urban renewal district receives to do projects that are identified in the plan. And at the end of twenty-five years, all those taxing districts get a bump. They receive almost their share of that ten million dollars after the district closes. And this is not a new tax. It's simply a division of taxes of what the taxing districts would have received that go to the redevelopment agency. There are two existing urban renewal districts. One on the east side of town is the Lake Grove Village Center Urban Renewal. And then over on the right, on the west side of town, is the East End and Central, our oldest district. On the, yeah, yeah. West side of town is Lake Grove, east side is, east side district, thanks. And then in the red, you'll see next to the downtown district is a plan, the Foothills Urban Renewal Plan, that was created in two thousand and twelve, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But so what does Laura do? I think we're almost like the development arm of the city, if you will. We engage in capital projects and redevelopment projects. We do public partnerships to develop projects like the Windward, Lakeview Village, and North Anchor projects and things like that. We also do, at one time, what we did, economic development through two thousand and twelve. And then that program was phased out, but now is embedded in the planning department for that. The goals and outcomes, a lot of our goals are tied to the council goals as far as economic development and things like that. It's also to revitalize certain parts of the city. Also, it's to create a stronger economic base to provide those property tax dollars. And then lastly, it's really to generate return on public investments that we've made. So the idea being that private money will follow public investment. And the other thing that I should note, and probably, probably that the heart and soul of the urban renewal district, I think, is about place making. It's really about trying to create special spaces and places where people want to come and visit, bring their friends when they're out of town, or when they come into town. But it also promotes the city as a destination, a community where people live, play, work, want to raise their family, create businesses. And ultimately, that all kind of creates, you know, and improves the quality of life in the community. And even though these projects are focused in certain districts, areas of a town, it really kind of has a broad community benefit to it. So let's see here. So the Lake Grove Village Urban Renewal Center, so that urban renewal plan was created in two thousand and twelve, and that was a result of about five-plus years of planning for the Lake Grove Village Center. And the plan was created to address two projects that came out of that village, that Lake Grove Village Center project, Boone's Ferry Road, phases one and two, and then public parking. Just some of the numbers for the Lake Grove District. It's about one hundred and seventy-two acres. It's the biggest district that we have right now. The maximum indebtedness is thirty-six million, again, which is the maximum amount that we can spend on projects in that district. The district receives about three million in net annual tax increment to use on these projects. And the district is estimated to close around two thousand and thirty-two, and when it does, we're estimating that the city could see up to one point four million in general fund revenue going back to the city. The highlights of the district itself is the completion of Boone's Ferry Road project in twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one. And there's a range of improvements, including streets, utilities, pedestrian improvements, and things like that. But the intent was really to create a safe, welcoming, pedestrian-friendly, business-supportive type of environment. And here's just a few different photographs of the improvements. And as you can see, there's a lot of lineal feed of improvements that was done, new signalized intersections, a lot of landscaping, and creating those kind of unique places with the pavers and sitting areas, and also embedded poems in the sidewalk. And the photograph to the right reminds me that this was a long process, and there was a lot of community input. And so there's, you know, I just want to give kudos for all of those neighbors and business owners that participated in this project, as well as the city's engineering department, because they led the construction of this project and completed it. Just a few more photos of kind of the change, kind of creating that street scape and a safe pedestrian environment. And some improvements are what kind of effect has it? On the left, you have before of a restaurant on Boone's Ferry Road, and there's, you see the sidewalk right next to the roadway, so there's no pedestrian separation. There's landscaping that's separating the building from the streets, and bottom right is the result of that. And so there's, the business is highlighted. You can see the business. There's a safe pedestrian corridor, and the aesthetics has been improved with the streetlights and landscaping and things like that. So with Lake Grove, it's unique, thirty-six million dollars in maximum indebtedness. Boone's Ferry Road was a thirty-eight million dollar project. Of that, thirty million was tax increment funding. The balance of it was bonds and SDCs. And so remaining in the district itself, we have about six million, five million dollars. Two-point-five or so of that would go towards the administrative services out to two thousand and thirty-two. The balance of that two-point-eight million could be used for projects to do in the district. So that is, one of the options is to use the balance of that for projects. You can close the district as well in two thousand and thirty-two, and you could also use that two-point million dollars to close the district earlier as well. Another option is, we have for the remaining phase two of Boone's Ferry and parking, we're estimating that those projects would be about forty-four million dollars. An option is to increase the maximum indebtedness for the district. And if that were an option for the board, are there any other projects that you would want to consider? This process would be pretty extensive. It'd be almost the same as if creating a new plan. So if we were to do something like that, this would be a good time to do it. East End Urban Renewal District, this is our oldest district that we've had. It's been existence for about forty years. Maximum indebtedness on here is ninety-four million. We've finished probably about sixty-six projects. A lot of those included facade improvements and things like that. The net annual tax increment revenue from that is about six million dollars. The district is estimated to close in two thousand and twenty-eight. When it does, we're estimating about two-point-two million would be returned to the city's general fund. As I mentioned before, our core services are capital projects and redevelopments. And I'm just gonna, I picked out a couple of projects that I really enjoyed working on. This one is on Second and B Avenue. It was a street scape project and includes creating a sitting area. And so it helps kind of activate that corner with Baird's on B, restaurant up on second floor, and what used to be Chuck's Coffee at the time, but now a wine tasting. First Street, this was one of the first major street scape projects that was done, and I think it really set the tone for the character of the downtown. All of the projects that we do moving forward from this one includes a lot of the same design elements, basalt columns, brick seating, and the ornamental lighting. Now, I always like to throw in historic photographs in here, and since the historic advisory board is here as well, they may enjoy this. And so you guys can't answer this question, but does anybody know where this, this street is, or where, oh, okay, I'm seeing a couple. Well, I think the mayor and councillor Mabup know because they saw my previous presentation, so.
You don't know?
It's, I think, board member Verdic knows. So, yeah, so it's not the Safeway block. So it is on State Street, and it's the Gemini. And so this was a street scape project that we did, and it was a partnership with a lot of the property owners where they participated in doing these improvements. And when that was completed, we then looked at the buildings, and they said, you know, we need to upgrade these buildings as well. And so we worked with them to do a facade grant to bring the street scape and improve the buildings at the same time. This is another project I really enjoy. This is the trolley station on State Street. The middle photograph is what it looked like previously before the improvements. Bottom left and bottom right are the results in those improvements. And an interesting fact about the bottom right are the pavers used in the parking lot, and those are pervious pavements. And so this was kind of one of our first forays in looking how to manage stormwater on site. And I've been out there when it's just pouring like crazy, and it's working really well, and it's, the pavers are doing well, looking good. And so it's, I think it was a good demonstration project for that. Okay, redevelopment projects, City Hall. So another question. Does anybody know where the old nineteen twenty-six City Hall was located? Okay, well, it's located on the Lakeview Village block. This is A Avenue, and these trees in the background are actually Upper Millennium Park. And so this is the opening between, I think this is currently occupied by Steinway Pianos, right there. So this is that corner. And fast forward, nineteen eighty-seven, our City Hall was built. You know, it's, it's, it's been challenging, to say the least. We had some water intrusion issues, and every year, we had issues with algae. And so the decision was made to move forward with a new City Hall Police nine-one-one facility. And so that's where we are today. And so this project's won a couple of awards from the law enforcement community, as well as the Daily Journal Commerce Project, first place for the public projects. And this is just kind of a comparison before, and the new building. And then this is always one of my favorites. Certainly was a tense time when we took down the old City Hall. There's about twenty feet separating the old and new building. And just a couple more shots. So the last project I wanted to talk about is the one that we're currently undertaking with Urban Development Partners, and it's to create that North Anchor project, and the importance of trying to develop our downtown as a walkable downtown area. And so the North Anchor project is intended to complement what we've started with Lakeview Village, the Windward, and Millennium Plaza Park. And it, this is the intersection of First and B. The hotel and residential are located on the north side of that, and this is what it's projected to look like. And for the hotel, we're looking at about a fifty thousand square foot building, eighty-three rooms, and a restaurant and bar with private dining. The mixed-use residential, about a hundred fifteen thousand square feet, sixty-seven units, eight of which are, will be workforce housing, which means it'll meet the eighty percent AMI threshold, and ground floor retail on the bottom to help activate that ground floor space. So with the East End, as I said before, this is our oldest district. Our maximum indebtedness is ninety-four million. We have pretty much maxed out that. We have about two hundred thousand left to basically cover administrative costs for this district. And if the district does close in two thousand and twenty-eight, when anticipated, as I said, approximately two-point-two million could be going back to the city's general fund. The other option is, you know, we still have about fifteen, seventeen urban renewal projects left in this district. We're estimating that's going to cost about sixty-four million. The board could look to extend the life of the district for all of the projects, or some of the projects, but certainly, it's an option. I think there's, the district speaks for itself, where we have had private investment come in and follow the public investment. And I think a lot of the redevelopment projects that we've done has kind of done what it's supposed to do, which was, you know, improve the economic development and kind of help energize the downtown area. So the last area I want to talk about is the Foothills Urban Renewal District, and this was a very short-lived urban renewal district, a couple months. And so it's fifty-eight acres, so it is, it is one of the smallest. But the importance of this district is that it was supporting a lot of the infrastructure, public infrastructure projects for the Foothills Framework Plan. And that plan was intended to revitalize that area with mixed use. The, this map shows, we've got about fifty-five billion dollars in projects, and that was in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twelve. Forty-three million of that was going to be paid through TIF. The balance of that was going to be SDCs and other funding sources. We're projecting just for, based on this project, it could be up to ninety-five billion with escalation costs from back to two thousand and twelve. But as I said, the Foothills Plan was adopted in two thousand and twelve. There was a previous version that was adopted with the streetcar. The July two thousand and twelve does not include the streetcar, and the concept behind that is that it's going to be Lake Oswego's next great neighborhood. Certainly, it's in a great position, geographically located with the river, the downtown. It was going to be a mixed-use, walkable community, and it would have strong connections to the downtown. And I'll point out kind of this And I'll point out kind of this B Avenue is where the Willamette steps were gonna be, and that kind of highlights kind of the importance also of the North Anchor project in trying to get that completed. So it really helps to tie in the downtown with the Foothills District and the rest of the improvements that have gone in down there, like the Foothills Park. So there's, there's the opportunity presented itself. The city is, is looking into creating a new wastewater treatment plant. And it's about a six-acre site, which is kind of where the hand is floating over, and that would replace the existing fourteen-acre City of Portland wastewater treatment plant. That would certainly open up different opportunities for this area. And the, the new plant would be a little more energy efficient. We could, there'd be the opportunities to resource enhancement. So at this time, there's the opportunity to perhaps reengage the community in the vision for this area. And the goals, is it the same as they were in 2012 when that plan was adopted? Or does it need to be reimagined, refined, or does it reinforce the vision? I think at a minimum, we'd have to look at it and redo the plan to take into consideration that the fourteen-acre plant would no longer be there, and then the new plant would be located in this area. And we'd have to look at the infrastructure connectivity and things like that. So the question for the Foothills, I think we kind of need to look at the past, where we are now, and, and the future. So the past, as you can see, it's, it was pretty gritty down there. I mean, it was all industrial. This is the major cement plant that was there before the apartments were developed, and this also was a woodchip plant before Foothills Park was developed. So as of today, we, you know, we've got condominiums, apartments, park developments surrounding this smaller area of industrial area. And so the vision for the Foothills Framework Plan was to look at that and revitalize that area. And so the question for the board is, you know, do we, what process, or do we move forward with, with this plan at this time? And if we do, we'd have to look at the plan itself to see what, what opportunities are being opened up by the fourteen-acre wastewater treatment plants, what's, what infrastructure changes when you need to be put in place. And based on those, then do we create an urban renewal plan to address the costs for those infrastructure? So with that, these are kind of the highlights of, of those questions, and I'm available for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Sid. Appreciate the updates. Right. Colleagues, comments, questions? Councillor Winland.
Thank you. Sid, I know you've been a big chunk of the workforce to make this all happen. You're the magic creator and conductor of many of the things that have happened, and we really appreciate all the work. One of the questions I have, in the Lake Grove, we talked about Phase One and Phase Two, and because the urban renewal area is in effect, we don't have really any plans for Phase Two, is that correct? I mean, or the plans are there, but we don't have funding?
There's, the, the 2.8 million that I talked about, that could go towards funding some of the engineering that could go towards that, but certainly the cost to cover it, that there's no funds to do that. I think there's, you know, like I said, I think you could use some of that to do some of the preliminary design and engineering for it.
Right. But then we would have to go back to the taxpayers and ask for an additional, basically, tax rate or bond or whatever.
Right. We'd have to see what the results of the design phase was and get a cost estimate and do a substantial amendment to the plan to include that, if you wanted to still include that as part of the tax increment financing strategy, or you could look at other potential sources for funding that.
And is it still correct that we could increase that fund by 20% without going to the voters?
That is the threshold, actually, in the R S, that's the threshold in there. However, when the plan was developed, the Lake Grove Plan specifically states that it requires concurrence from the taxing jurisdictions for, for any, for any increase in the maximum indebtedness. So we'd have to go back, and it's 75% of the taxing districts that impose 75% of the levy on there. So, for example...
Okay, so let's get that out of City Speak.
Yeah.
So how to, 75% of the original amount? Or now what, so, explain it.
It, it would be, so we have maybe fourteen different taxing districts. Of those, the city, school district, and the county, they impose probably 75, 80% of the taxes in that urban renewal area. So we would need approval from, besides the city, the county, and the school district to, to meet that 75% threshold.
And that would just give us a 20% increase?
No, that would give us whatever increase, because again, the plan says for any increases in the maximum indebtedness, you would need to, to receive concurrence from those districts.
Okay. And so if you were to go forward with it, then, and everyone gave their blessing, we would not be raising any taxes, we would just be taking the urban renewal district timeframe into a longer, longer period to pay off that, the, whatever the projects that you're going to do.
Right, right.
And from the standpoint, can you explain just briefly what Phase Two would be, so that people have an idea of what we did and, and what we still have yet to accomplish?
Yeah, so Phase Two... Go back a little more to the original one. So Phase One included improvements from Madrona all the way up to, a little, little past Douglas Way, but Phase Two, or sorry, that was Phase One. Phase Two would probably include the intersection from Oak Ridge all the way up to Cruz Way. And the reason for that is, at the, at the post office at the corner, it really begins to taper, but it doesn't do the full street. And so the integration of the transportation system, the stormwater undergrounding utility would, would have to go, you know, probably from the post office at Douglas Way up to Cruz.
So last question on, if you were to do the, and one, one part, when you showed us all those beautiful pictures of the before and after, and one of the things that you did mention was in Ricardo's, that picture, there was no, if you'll notice, no wires, no, so all our utilities are underground.
Right.
And I have to say that from a, a person that is just looking at aesthetics, it adds huge value to that whole corridor. And that would be another piece of, of the second phase, right, is to continue with that.
Right.
So we would have it from Cruz Way all the way down to where it, it ends looking, whatever direction that is, the opposite. So all the way down to West Sunset or Madonna, Madrona, somewhere down. So we would have it for the whole corridor then, is that correct?
Right.
And let's just say that if we wanted to do another project, explain to me how Urban Renewal District, did it help build City Hall?
Yes, we, there was about 35 million in, in tax increment funding for it. The balance was capital reserves.
Right. So the intention of an urban renewal district can also include capital projects that would benefit not just the infrastructure part or the landscape, but it could be a building, such as like a library?
It, it could. I know there's been some recent discussion about using those types of funds for buildings, so certainly we'd have to look at that a little more. I know in 1979, the, the main fire station was constructed using urban renewal funds, so.
Right.
There's a history of that, but I think there's a little more caution now with folks, and so we'd have to definitely look into that and see what, what that would entail.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Winland. Councillor Afkan.
Sid, thank you so much for the pictures. I think it's a great history lesson where we are and where we are today, and the destination that everybody talks about, it came together through a vision. And it's the comprehensive plan, it's the LoRa, it's the leaders who have had the vision to bring us here. And it just didn't happen overnight, and it came through with a lot of thought, thoughtfulness to get us here. So those pictures, I think, are very valuable for people who don't understand how we got here. I do remember 1982, walking through downtown, and it was a different picture. I also want to thank you for being so knowledgeable and confident about the LoRa information. I think every time I've come to you with questions, you've had it right there. I have three questions for you. For East End, you mentioned if you extend it to 2028, there's a $64 million estimate for miscellaneous projects. What are the couple, three of them that you can share with us?
What's that? It's, is Attachment Five, I believe in the staff reports, right. So they're broken out into public improvement projects as well as development projects. You know, there's Third Street, Fourth Street improvements, where we would do the same thing as we did on First Street.
Keep expanding.
Right, streetscape improvements. There are larger projects even, looking at, so the Safeway block, looking at that as a full block redevelopment project. And so there's also some miscellaneous things in here, like the facade grant project, program was really popular, you know, in 2012. I think we ended up stopping that project in around 2012, 2014, due to funding things and like that. So certainly, I think there's, there's a good left list to be had, but there's also, you know, there's been a lot of gains on the projects that we've done.
East End again? I know 1986 is a long time ago, and some of the people in this room were not even born when the scope was being talked about. But from your perspective, did we accomplish the mission, or there are still things out there that we should consider completing?
That's, that's a great question. From the 86 plan, I think a lot of them were addressed, or properties were purchased to poise this for the 2004 plan, which updated it. You know, I, I think probably one of the biggest things I would say, where we do get a lot of bang for the buck, is that's the streetscape improvements. And we've got examples from the State Street project, this project currently up. It helps kind of congeal that downtown area, creates that character. And I've always felt that if we, if we do those public investments, then the private investment will, will follow those. So, you know, just off the top of my head, I think those are things if, if the board were, were considering.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Thanks, councillor Afkan. So Sid, for, for, for the Foothills District, you know, we could, it, it's possible in drawing that district to include some other parts of downtown where we may have projects that we haven't yet, you know, fulfilled to, I mean, you know, we're not gonna probably extend it off as far as the Safeway block, but.
Right.
You know, around the, around the waterfront downtown, and there was always a vision for that kind of a, a project there, connecting Sun to Leaf and Lower Millennium. And so there's, there's still flexibility in, in, in recrafting the borders of this potential district, yeah?
There, there is. The, the current plan, since it's in 2028, but we could look to close that out, explore, and, and create a Foothills Urban Renewal District to include things that you say, so maybe some of those projects that, that didn't get captured in, in, in the current funding. So absolutely, yeah.
And once we close out in the current plan, then we do return those, the, the tax dollars back to the general fund?
Right, it'd go back to the, the taxing districts and go back to the general fund.
Great, while we create the new district. So does everyone feel like moving this direction? Is a, oh, you now have a question? Okay, please. Oh, good, okay, go ahead.
Maybe more of a comment, maybe it's a question too. So I think what I've seen here is, over several city council administrations, there's been a, a very deep commitment from the council, as well as the staff, to Lake Oswego's kind of livability and community, right? That's, I mean, constantly iterating, constantly improving. I don't see a time really when we're ever not gonna need to continue to reinvest in our community and make things livable to the current standard of whichever time era it'll be. But what this does bring to mind is the fact, on the East End, how important it is to keep our focus on the North Anchor project, because while it's beautiful now, it's never gonna return to us the value that we're hoping for unless it's finished, unless North Anchor is finished. Like, that's the crown jewel, it has to be done, we have to focus on it. And, and, and I think we need to keep pressure on our, on our partners to accomplish that. So that's kind of, kind of where I see this lead. The question I had, or then the Foothills, I think developing that and having that part of the renewal plan is important, because as we're being asked to continually, continually improve our inventory of housing, that's a great opportunity for us. And then the question I would have is, with any of these leftover funds, are we able to allocate those to, say, a North Anchor project to help, help facilitate that going forward, or some of the other projects that we need that aren't, that are short on some things?
The funds generated within the district need to stay within that district. So for the East End example, North Anchor, we have $200,000 left for administrative services. So, but the other thing that we really bump up against is our BOLI requirements, which is, we, we can't provide in construction costs, for example, more than $750,000 without triggering BOLI costs on there, which could impact construction costs by another 10, 15, 20%, depending on, on where it is right now. Certainly, we're working with Urban Development Partners to look at other strategies in trying to absorb some of the things that have been going on with the economy. And I think we're, we're getting close to the strategy, and I think that's one of the things that we're gonna bring back to the board for, for your discussion consideration.
I would just say, let's keep the gas on that project and finish this, all the great things we're doing already, so.
That is great. Okay, thank you. Councillor Verdic.
So if we choose to move forward with Phase Two of Lake Grove, would we need to go back and do any evaluation, or is that kind of up to the direction of the board? I know right now it includes parking and then all the things that you kind of included.
Yeah. As far as evaluation...
I mean, would you move forward with the way that, like, say, we've done it, Phase Two is ready to go, or can we pick and choose, you know, work with the Lake Grove District and, and say, is this all still relevant? Are there aspects that maybe aren't relevant?
Yeah, I, I think there would need definitely be a discussion with the, the technical advisory and, and those neighborhood folks, that were part of the planning process, and, and ask them, so here's kind of the situation we have now. We've got, you know, from the post office up to Cruz Way, what, what's, what has worked in the previous plan, and what would you, what can you see transferring to this? And then... And then perhaps maybe doing some preliminary design to at least get an idea of maybe some high-level costs for the project. And that $2.8 million could be used for doing some of that.
Yeah, because I'm just not sure if the way Phase Two was originally planned, if it's still, I'm sure some of it's relevant, but I think having that reflection and learning from what worked well, what makes sense for the remaining is good. And I just also want to, yeah, I think obviously Foothills is an area that we're going to need to look at, we're going to need to develop a plan. I think we have a lot of great things in the past plans that we can probably leverage, but to your point, we need to keep assessing. And I also like the idea of saying, do we need to expand the boundary that you have currently here to make sense? Maybe North Anchor, you know, kind of look at what does that look like to just kind of, for Councilor Raffs, keep our pedal to the metal, so.
Would, so if we were to close out the East End District prior to the completion of the North Anchor and wrap North Anchor, and let's say North Anchor hasn't started yet, and wrap it into a new district, does that create problems with our contributions to that project? Or do we need to wait for the North Anchor to finish before closing out the district?
I think we'd have to have a discussion with our finance department folks, if that's a possibility. Because if we close the district, then the city would, I think, assume all of the debt responsibilities.
We kind of need to finish the North Anchor.
But given that it doesn't expire till 2028, we're quite hopeful that the North Anchor project will be at least substantially complete by then. I know, they're calling to tell us that they're going to give a equity investment.
The investor. Okay, okay. Councilor Corrigan.
Yeah, thank you very much for your work. It's really, it's really exciting. It strikes me that maximum flexibility would entail optimally drawing the Foothills District maybe slightly different than it is now, and renewing Lake Grove. So while flexibility is really wonderful, frequently it has a downside. Can you think of any downsides to doing that?
To having flexibility in our plans?
Yeah, to building in that flexibility of doing those two things.
You know, I think flexibility is key in redevelopment because you just don't know what to expect. And if the next succession of board members, you know, continue that vision, I think they will continue, I think, what was started by this board and previous boards. And so I think they would also appreciate the ability to have that flexibility, so.
Great, thanks.
Councilor.
Yeah, no, honestly, it's my second time or third time I see this presentation. And I just wanted to thank Sid for the wonderful work he's doing for the city. And when you look at this urban renewal, you just see the future of Lake Oswego as bright and even very diverse because there are many projects that fit, you know, many as folks. And, you know, we are working on a lot of development, a lot of housing and workforce housing and all that. But like, the question I have, maybe it has nothing. We talked with the LOSD in the Foothills. Is there a possibility to have, like, workforce housing in that project? Given that we, I think we have more land, like, the 58 acres can be now 62 or 66 if we build the wastewater treatment in a shorter space than it is now, so.
Absolutely. Even the 2012 plan did have a line item for workforce housing in there. I think there was about $8 million for that line item, and it was for assistance in financing. And certainly, I think now, as we're looking at a lot more workforce housing in the community, and there's also a lot of other, I think, programs out there to assist in making those types of projects happen. I, you know, again, I think this is one of the reasons why maybe this is a good opportunity now to kind of reimagine this or kind of relook at this area and see what are the things that were developed in 2012 and the visions and goals? What transfers over today? And how do we make it a little more applicable to where the community is now?
That's right. Councilor Winlet, thank you. Councilor, did you have a follow?
I just wanted to say that I think one of the reasons why the Foothills Urban Renewal Plan was the shortest urban renewal district was because we were not in alignment as a city and a community. And I think to many of your comments, having everyone on board, figuring it out, spending the time to do it right is critical. And then we get it so that people don't start running for city council to make it the next shortest urban renewal district. So I think it's important for us to go through the community process, just like we have on many other things. And I think success in this city is when everybody is at the table and we figure it out together as a group. And I think we have an opportunity, we're going to have to do something with, if everything goes well with the sewer treatment plant plans, it gives us an opportunity to look at things differently. And I think that's one of the exciting last chunks of town that we can influence in a really constructive way. So I'm looking forward to looking at it.
That's great.
Whenever. And I don't know, so what are you asking of us, just direction-wise? Do we just keep marching forward?
Yeah, that's a good question, Councilor Winlet. I'd like to talk a little bit about the timing. I mean, so let's talk about East End first. So we have the district scheduled to close out in 2028, and we have an active project underway that is our focus, you know, right now. Are you proposing to start, are you looking at something for next year to start, you know, picking up the Foothills plan again and doing some of the planning work around district boundaries, the content of the plan, updating it?
Right. I think we would come back to the board with a more detailed and specific plan tailored to kind of the direction that you're giving, that you would give this evening.
Okay, well, I think we're hearing unanimous support around moving ahead with a plan for Foothills, being the next iteration of our redevelopment plan downtown. And actually, in both, you know, Lake Grove and downtown, we're fortunate to be working from existing plans. You know, none of these are new plans, but they're plans that need to be updated in light of current context. I mean, much has changed since 2012, of course, and even things have changed since we first contemplated the Lake Grove Urban Renewal District as well. So good to put these plans in the context of the present day and all of that. So then in Lake Grove, also hearing support for everyone for expanding, both expanding the capacity of that district, which of course is at its limit, but also taking a look at opportunities for what this next iteration of, or what amendments could be made to the Lake Grove Village Center plan. I mean, Phase Two is critical. The Phase Two project is critical to complete, Phase Two. But it sounds like there, some of us are thinking along the lines of what other type of great public improvements, I mean, a public plaza and other civic presence has long been imagined for Lake Grove. And to take a look now at the health of that, that district's been much healthier than anyone anticipated. I think when it was first created, we thought there's no way this district's is going to pay for anything other than the road improvements and maybe a surface parking lot. You know, that was kind of, but now I think things have changed that maybe we can dream a little bit bigger in Lake Grove and take a look at what other projects we may be able to do with those urban resources. Councilor Afkan.
I'm trying to summarize what I think you just said. Keep East End District open till we finish or we get across some kind of a line with North Anchor. Validate Phase Two Lake Grove District. Make sure that what we're going to do is now definitely in sync with what already has happened and what the demand is. And third one is create a new Foothills Urban Renewal Plan. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, I think though, if I could cut the Lake Grove one, I think the Lake Grove one's a little more subtle than that, which is that we may need to actually update the plan.
Yes.
Because in addition to incorporating Phase Two of the roadway, we might want to consider additional projects that, in the district. And I guess I would recommend to you, Councilor Corrigan's not going to like what I'm about to say. There's always been a plan for there to be substantial delay between the completion of Phase One and the beginning of Phase Two. I mean, from the beginning, there was a recognition, it might be as much as a decade between the end of Phase One and the beginning of Phase Two. So I guess what I would, I only have one Sid, that's the reason I'm going around on this. I would recommend that we probably need to take up Foothills before we update in terms of the level of urgency. And part of that is, as the wastewater plant becomes more real, we're getting more and more questions about what's going to happen down at Foothills. So even if we don't complete the plan or start urban renewal, even if Lake Grove change actually happens first, the work plan development for what needs to happen for the planning of Foothills probably needs to go advance of the work plan development for what needs to happen at Lake Grove. I realize that there's some folks in the community really hoping for more and more at Lake Grove, but I think in terms of where we're going to get the pressure for public improvements that are going to lead private development, it's actually probably going to be at Foothills.
I think, yeah, well, I don't, we shouldn't, we just be careful not to pass on opportunities.
Absolutely. I'm not suggesting, like, sort of, for example, if we wanted to add another public facility, like the library, to our Lake Grove plan, I think, again, I'm just talking about the work plan.
Right.
I think the work plan for Foothills in terms of laying out when things are going to have to happen is more urgent, which doesn't mean that you wouldn't be adopting the amendments to Lake, this is what I said, adopting the amendments to Lake Grove even sooner than you're adopting a Foothills plan. So do you see what I'm saying? The work plan development needs to happen so that folks involved in Foothills know what's going to happen.
Yes.
And then we can move to the work plan development and amendments to Lake Grove. They'll be fine going together, but we've got some other boxes to tick on Lake Grove before we know what other kind of, sort of, projects might be realistic.
Councilor.
And I understand there's only enough Sid capacity, but I will tell you, when you look at the estimate of what, I think, was it? The, one of the estimates where it was the, it was $44 million then, and now it's $98 million then. We can hire a lot of people to do, my point is, is the longer you wait, the more it's going to be.
Actually, okay, I'll take that. Okay, Sid and I will go back and I do think that.
You tell us what you can do, but.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate that. So, because there are opportunities in Lake Grove that might present, that won't present in Foothills for quite a long time. So I hear you. All right, so let me, Sid and I and Anthony and Sean sit down and sort of try to figure that piece out.
It's great, and it provides some certainty. I know for both Foothills and in Lake Grove, people are wondering, you know, what is the plan? You know, so I appreciate us having the study session and direction from the council because I think that helps answer some of those questions. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sid.
All right, thank you.
Very good. There's a lot of urban renewal to come. Yes. Okay. Let me get myself straight here. Hey, all right. With that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting of the lower board, and we're going to call to order the meeting of the Lake Oswego City Council. And we are honored today to have several exciting and important presentations. And folks joining us, welcome to you all, and thank you for your patience as we went through the LoRa meeting. We are going to start today with a proclamation honoring National Historic Preservation Month. And I'm going to welcome Mr. Paul Espy and friends, friend, forward. Mr. Espy is going to, is going to, I don't, that's not the word I want to use. He's going to show us a slideshow. It's going to be great. And we're going to have a presentation of the Preservation Merit Award, which is also very exciting.
Excellent. Honorable mayor, members of the council, it's really great to be here today. May is Preservation Month, and let's take action to save, celebrate, and discover places that reflect the breadth of American history. Since 1973, the National Trust for Historic Preservation has joined the preservation movement in celebrating historic places during May, and we are all people saving places. The changing demographics of our community provide opportunities for the city's preservation program. Does the diversity of cultures shape and enrich our city? And we will continue to encourage wider involvement and inclusion in determining which sites are worthy of preservation. I have with me this afternoon, an individual who's taken action to save our great places by revitalizing one of the city's iconic gathering spaces that's shown in the slide right here. It's the Lake Theater. Drew Parel, developer and building designer, local business owner and community volunteer. But before we get to that, I would just like to provide some information about the city's Historic Preservation Grant Program real quick. This is one of HTRAB's ongoing projects, and the city of Lake Oswego offers match funding for preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation of historic properties. Last year, HTRAB had four grant applicants at 1136 Westwood Ho, the Allen Two Residence, 1805 Glenmore Terrace, the True Blood House, 257 Iron Mountain Boulevard, the Davison House, and 885 McVeigh, the Worthington House. These grants fund siding, window replacement, and all sorts of very expensive historic preservation efforts that would otherwise be very costly for historic homeowners. Qualifying projects can receive a grant that provides partial reimbursement for the work, and grant applications are available in planning and building services or online, and the applicants, the applications are due at the end of this month. Each year, the Historic Resources Advisory Board presents a merit award to an individual who has made significant contributions or a contribution to the city's preservation effort. I would like to introduce HTRAB member Casey Howard, who's here with me this afternoon. And she will present the award to Drew Parel. So Drew, can you come on up here?
Come on up here, Drew. We'll come up by the council.
Okay.
There are very few places in our community that a child of today and a community member in their 80s will be able to imagine in their childhood, especially one that is in its original iteration as a movie theater. And we just want to thank Drew. Thank you. We want to thank Drew because he has preserved one of the most iconic businesses in our community, one of the most iconic buildings, and it's still in use for its original purpose, which is very rare in our community. And he has done a beautiful job with that. And in recognition of that, the Historic Resources Advisory Board would like to present him with our merit award for 2023. It's been a hard year since COVID in the movie and restaurant business, and he has books. So we wanted to show our appreciation to him.
Thank you.
Say something, Drew.
Yeah, sure, so.
The mic, yeah.
I was here when the.
There we go.
I'm sorry. Let's do this. So I've been here since the beginning of the meeting, and it's really wonderful to hear you guys talk about urban renewal and renovating old projects and building new projects. You know, I've been a real estate bum just about all of my life. Since 1980, I think that somewhere between 50 and 60 projects I took on, and about a third of those were new construction, and the rest were all renovation projects, basically. I would buy old buildings, fix them up. There's a building right down here called Bay Vista. I bought that in 1985, built new stuff onto it, and then sold it to a major developer, and he spent a bunch more money, and look what you've got today, so. But all of that stuff really fits in to what I think we should be doing more of. Instead of building in the suburbs, let's build inward and develop what we have and make it a better place for everybody to live and more comfortable. So thanks for your effort. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you. The theater on State Street. Thank you. Thank you, Casey. Thank you. Paul.
National Public.
Oh, okay. So next, we are also celebrating National Public Works Week. This takes place. This takes place May 21st through the 27th, and we are honored to have members of the city's Public Works team here with us today. I want to welcome you all. I was looking on the, the website, some of the, really to illustrate the breadth of the work that Public Works does, looking at the city has a Public Works FAQ. These are, guess what the common questions people ask about, that ask the Public Works team. And it starts, when will the street sweeper be by? Will the city trim our bush? When will you fix potholes slash signs on my street? When will you clean my catch basins? Who maintains the detention facility behind my home? Who do I call to report illegal dumping down the storm drain? Is blowing my grass or leaves into the street bad for water quality? What's my water pressure, et cetera? Who's going to install water service at my house? So the, from roads to the water to the wastewater, you all do immense work all behind the scenes, and you really impact day-to-day lives of our residents probably more than anyone else. So thank you all for the great work that you do, the customer service approach, and the, the way that you make Lake Oswego a great community. And so to honor Public Works Appreciation Week, we have a video we're going to show.
National Public Works Week is a great opportunity to celebrate the unsung heroes that provide critical essential services throughout the city of Lake Oswego, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Public Works is really the base of civilization. It's about water, sewer, stormwater, and transportation. Everything from roads to pedestrian facilities, traffic signals. We ensure that the public has those basic needs every single day.
Whether it is ensuring that water is produced and distributed throughout the city safely, that our wastewater and stormwater systems are maintained, that our streets, our lights, and our sidewalks are safe for travel at all times, this is the group that does that on a daily basis.
In Lake Oswego, we have a very full-service Public Works department.
There's three primary divisions, one being our water treatment plant, two being our engineering department, and three being our maintenance operations crews, the, the folks that you see out on a daily basis in the streets.
We have a variety of different staff, everyone from administrative staff to utility workers, engineers, communication specialists, coordinators for permit technicians.
We rely heavily upon each other. We collaborate often to ensure that all the essential services are delivered to the, the residents of this city.
In cases of emergency, we all come together for the greater good, which is to respond to the initial emergency and help each other out.
Often overlooked aspect of a Public Works department, particularly on our maintenance operations team, is emergency response. And being a Public Works first responder is something that we take very serious here, whether it's responding to snow and ice events, wind events, flooding. We stand ready to be prepared to clear debris if there should be a Cascadia earthquake event. Our crews show up. They work incredibly long hours to ensure the safety of all the public.
We're going to spend this week doing a deeper dive into celebrating those different aspects of the entire department because everybody makes a difference in this department. And if it weren't for all of us coming together, we would not be successful in providing those basic services to the public.
This week is an opportunity to take a, a look behind the scenes and pull back the curtain to show the tremendous amount of work and reliability that we put on these folks to ensure the public's safety every day.
Thank you all for joining us this week as we celebrate National Public Works Week, and we appreciate you taking the time to learn more about the many unsung heroes here at the city of Lake Oswego.
Well, the members of the Public Works team, do you mind standing so we can recognize you with the applause? So during Public Works Week, we are in doing a behind-the-scenes video on social media, showcasing the great work that you all do. We're also going to be flying the Public Works First Responder flag at the maintenance center, which I look forward to seeing. Didn't know that flag existed. And at the library, they will be doing a book display, a family movie on Friday, May 26, at 2:00 PM, and a construction-related craft from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Friday, May 26, as well. So Friday, May 26, at the library, a big day to celebrate Public Works, National Public Works Week. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. That was a great video. Thank you. And today, we are also recognizing National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which takes place on June 2nd. As we all know, tens of thousands of Americans, I mean, nearly 50,000 in 2021, die from gun violence on an annual basis. Nearly half of those are from suicide, and eight out of 10 homicides in this nation involve gun violence. Mayors, city council people, city leaders, law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and really know their communities best. And they're the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and they're best positioned to understand how to keep residents safe. Protecting public safety in communities that they serve is, is our highest responsibility as, as city leaders. In January of 2013, a, a young woman named Hadiya Pendleton, she was shot and killed at age 15. And so now this year, 2023, in what would be her 26th birthday, people across the United States recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and they wear orange, as you, community members, here are, are doing to tribute, in tribute to Ms. Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. So this idea was inspired by a group of Ms. Pendleton's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters, you know, went out in, in the woods, and orange is a, a color that symbolizes the value of human life. So by wearing orange on June 2nd, 2023, Americans raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. At this time, I'd like to invite, I know there's a member of the group who'd like to come and speak. Hi. Welcome. It's great to have you here. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you, Mayor Buck, and members of the Lake Oswego City Council for issuing the 2023 City Proclamation declaring the first Friday in June, June 2nd, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. My name is Debbie Lindgren, and I live in the Uplands neighborhood of Lake Oswego. I am a volunteer with Moms Demand Action. Our organization believes gun violence is a public health issue, and we're committed to doing what it takes to keep families safe in our community. It starts with each of us working together to solve the crisis. If you hear one message today, let it be that gun violence is preventable. We do not have to live this way or die this way. We should all be able to go to the grocery store, a nightclub, a movie theater, a place of worship, a college campus, our place of work, or a children's school without the fear of being shot. Join me to raise awareness of gun violence prevention by wearing orange in June to honor victims and survivors of gun violence. Wear Orange was created in 2015 by the family of 15-year-old Hadiya Pendleton, who was killed in 2013 by gun violence in Chicago. Once again, we unite in our call to end gun violence as we come together for Wear Orange 2023 to remember all the Hadiyas in the nation. We honor the lives taken too soon. Nearly 48,000 people die each year, and approximately 85,000 are shot and wounded. That is 120 people who die each day and over 200 people wounded each day by gun violence. We can and must do better. Thank you for participating in National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Moms Demand Action. Also, I know you work hand-in-hand with Students Demand Action, helping the youngest advocates who are making a huge difference on this front in raising awareness and advocating here locally before the state and at the national level. I know there's a great movement here in Lake Oswego supporting this. We appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What do you want to ask?
Ma'am, yeah, I just wanted to, as an American, I just want to say something because one of the reasons I, I wanted to be an American was to be an American. That's not to be a Democrat or a Republican or a gun lover or something. And this is very dear to me because I work with children, and my first shock was when someone entered a school and killed kids. I was out, and I left kids in my school, and I was, I listened to NPR. I almost left, left my car there and run to school, and I realized, no, I am driving. Because it was shocking, and we continue to send prayers and thoughts like cowards, looking our children die, looking our brothers and sisters kill themselves. And we continue to work. It's like now, there's a debt ceiling. We're going to collapse the economy. We have parties that help, that are holding us hostages. It's the Democrat and the Republican, and we cannot move. It's not a debate of you and us. It's us. And people have to come to that and realize that vote out anybody. There's a congressman in Oregon who represents Eastern Oregon. I don't care about his. We were in, in Washington, DC, and one of our children from Hillsboro asked him, how can we buy back the guns, the AR-15? You know what he responded? This is not our problem. You guys find money to buy back the guns. That's not our job. Like, it means Washington's job is not to end gun violence. Salem's job is not to end gun. They will never end it. So if you want gun violence to end it, we have to fire all of them. Anyone who's saying prayers and thought has to lose their job. So we have people who can go there, whoever they are. We don't care. It's not party or color. We have to leave binaries in, in Oregon, in America, like you are black or white or people of color. We are Americans. There's nothing. We should stop the, up the calling people, anything else but Americans. And if we don't, we will continue to die like fools to see cowardly our children being killed in our schools. This is the most shameful thing. If, and I'm telling you something, if a gunman entered Congress and killed them, the next day, they will have decision to do it. I'm not calling anyone to do that, but this is where it will go. Because it's ridiculous that moms come here, mom demanding actions. And we continue. Today, we are talking, tomorrow, you'll hear in the news, oh, someone entered in a shop and shot eight. Today, someone shot three people. Today. And maybe while I'm talking, someone is being shot. And we, we are, what are we? Are we a country? Are we? What are we? Are we barbarians? That look at this happen. It's safer to go to school in Ukraine than it is to Amer- in America. Can you believe that? So honestly, all these things, I love them. We are wearing all these things. It's just a matter of being Americans and, and this senseless and shameful way of living. And I support what you folks are doing and just like call people. I'm calling Americans. I'm not calling any party or any, I'm just calling you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Boob.
Debbie, I support him 100%. I travel overseas a lot for my job, and as an American, I am not proud. As a matter of fact, I'm ashamed of what's happening in our country. And if you gave me a large T-shirt, I will wear it on June 2nd and June 3rd. I don't know about the other councilors, but that's my commitment to you, and I thank you for coming here.
Thank you, Councilor Afghan. And we're going to take a short recess. We'd like to do, take a photograph with you all as well. So we'll be back in about five, 10 minutes. Okay, we are back in order. And next on the agenda is public comment. And we have two folks, Linda Ganzini, Dorothy Atwood, please come forward. Glad to have you each have three minutes. Are you doing something in sync? Are you going to trade? Are you going to, one of you speak and then there's the other one?
We're being collaborative.
You're being collaborative.
Yes.
We're so glad you're here.
So we'll take it together. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. I'm Dorothy Atwood and this is Linda Ganzini. We're the co-presidents of the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network. And we're here today on behalf of the LOSN Board of Directors to support Lake Oswego's Climate Action Plan. We applaud the city for creating and implementing these important projects. And we greatly appreciate Amanda Watson's expertise, creativity, and effectiveness. Surveys that our city has conducted show that sustainability and climate change are of great importance to Lake Oswego residents. And it's important to continue making this plan a priority. It's clear that these issues will take concerted effort by the city. Staff will need time and money to accomplish this plan. We support, we have read this new status report. And we support all of Amanda's recommended six next steps. But we would like to highlight three of them that are of particular importance to LOSN, plus one additional one.
So Amanda's first recommendation is to develop a citywide electric vehicle charging strategy. And we strongly agree. Lake Oswego must develop a comprehensive plan for electric vehicle charging with short-term and long-term goals, including commercial charging, public charging, and multi-vehicle charging that takes into account reliability, accessibility, and user experience. This plan should be completed within one year. We want to share with you a remarkable figure showing the growth of electrical vehicle adoption, and you should have a copy of that. As of December 2022, and this is data from the state of Oregon, there were over 2,000 electric vehicles registered in Lake Oswego. On average, one for every eight households in Lake Oswego. And on the back, it shows that this is over twice the number projected in the original Climate Action Plan. But what is lagging is the development of reliable, accessible part, public charging network. Lack of charging negatively impacts the EV user experience. The development of charging, public charging requires extensive local planning. Although many residents of Lake Oswego have home chargers, the lack of public charging further disadvantages residents of multifamily housing. In addition, in terms of business climate, onsite charging pulls people to shop in Lake Oswego, and when they're charging, they stay longer and buy more. Amanda's second recommendation is to continue to identify and pursue opportunities for clean energy. And we want to focus on rooftop solar and community solar. We wholeheartedly support this recommendation. Our utility provider has mandated a goal of 80% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. In its resources plan that they put out last month, they say that they're going to be looking to us to give back to them rooftop solar for periods of high use during peak times. Lake Oswego met its climate action goal of 1 megawatt of solar in 2021, and by May of 2023 achieved 2 megawatts of solar generating capacity from 200 net metering customers. We would like Lake Oswego to reach a goal of 1,000 roofs within the next five roofs. Now, you may think that this is a shady spot. But I walk in many neighborhoods and there are lots of south-facing places without trees all over the place. And we should be reaching out and getting solar on all of them. Dorothy?
The third recommendation that we want to highlight is the last one. We strongly support the establishment of measurable targets for the goals of the plan. We feel that it's particularly important to focus on the goals achieved by 2020, 2030. Smart goals, that being specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, will help keep us on track and accountable. In keeping with this recommendation, we suggested, as you heard Linda just say, specific targets for those recommendations of the first two that Amanda had. Finally, we'd like to add that we're delighted and happy with the sustainability attributes that the city has included in the recreation center and the wastewater treatment plant design. And with that in mind, we strongly recommend that sustainability be integrated into capital project planning and approved capital projects from the beginning of their design as a standard institutionalized process. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you both. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Okay. I don't think there's anyone else here for public comments. Okay. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have three items. Work Order 298, which is the Blue Heron 2 trunk sanitary sewer project. Work Order 323, the Daniel Way channel stabilizing, stabilizing project. And item 9.3, which is a letter of endorsement for the RCP projects. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes 7-0. And moving on to council business. First item is legislative session update by Thiesing. Forward to. Tell us how everything's going.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Madison Thiesing, Assistant to the City Manager. And today I am going over a legislative update as we enter kind of the final stretch. As you've probably seen, there's been a lot of excitement at the Capitol. But before I dive in, I did want to share that last week, we had the opportunity to take our Youth Leadership Council down to the Capitol. And that was with a few of our students, Mayor Buck, Councilor Boop. And we met with Daniel Wen, our representative, Senate President Wagner. We got a tour of the Capitol, and our students got to sit on the chamber floor while they were in session. So a very exciting thing to be able to watch local government, state government, and federal government all in action at these different levels. So we are also actively recruiting for the Youth Leadership Council. So if you have high schoolers in your life, please encourage them. Now on to legislation. So today I'm going to be focusing on the housing bills that we're still watching as well as an update on tolling. And so first we'll go through housing. There's three bills that I'd like to talk about. So I'm just going to run through them and then leave room for questions, and then we'll move on to tolling. So the first one is Senate Bill 5511, which is the Oregon Mayor's Association for the Homeless Funding Proposal. It's not one we've talked about, but it was something we have provided comment on as a part of the League's efforts. Currently, it is looking like there will be some allocations to the Community Services Department related to this funding package, which is not just homeless services, but it's housing affordability. And it's putting dollars in the local hands, almost like how we've done with ARPA. So saving, saving that model, saying we want state dollars given locally so we can have programs that are impacting our residents. Right now, that funding package will probably decrease. It was pretty big. But it is going to be moving forward. Right now, it's just the question is how much money that will be. But it's very positive for us. The second bill to talk about is the UGB Expansion Bill. So the Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Bill that we have talked about previously. Initially, that was Senate Bill 1051. It was reintroduced a couple weeks ago as Senate Bill 1096. This is a rework that allows cities to decline the expansion request by developers. That was not originally an off, an option in the first round. It has not had a work session nor scheduled one. So we are coming up on deadline. And so we're just going to watch that. We provided technical comments with the League as well as the Home Builders Association, and we haven't seen any progress on this bill specifically. But it has been identified as a priority for the governor. So we're still going to watch just to make sure it doesn't ends up in a different bill, which sometimes can happen at this final stage. The last bill to cover is House Bill 3414, which is the variance bill. We've sent some emails about the public hearing last week, which thank you again to the mayor for providing oral testimony. We submitted written testimony. Right now, the question will be, how does the state make amends between Amendment 5 and Amendment 6? So at the public hearing, there were two amendments. Five was proposed by Representative Gamba with a coordination with the League of Cities and many of the local jurisdictions as an alternative to move forward with this variance bill. The same time at the public hearing, the governor introduced Amendment 6. So both were being here heard at the exact same time. They are in conflict of each other. Our preference would that the bill does not move forward. But if it does, we prefer five. There hasn't been any public talk yet about how these bills might either be combined as, or excuse me, these amendments be combined as one amendment and workable, or if they will be moving forward with the governor's bill exclusively, essentially. Right now, obviously, our concerns are how variances are handled. There's two major parts of this bill. It's variances, but also the creation of a department for more oversight on housing production. If we get to the point where they're going to separate these different components of the bill, maybe we might be interested. But nothing has been presented as an alternative of separating this bill into two sections. We're waiting for a work session so they have their public hearing. We need to have a work session for them to vote on it. And we're still waiting to see when that is scheduled. It hasn't been posted yet.
You think it might die?
I don't think it will die. Yeah.
So that's our concern right now with the Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Bill as well as the variance bill. Both are identified as governor bills, so we aren't really sure how this is going to play out right now. The League has been the main coordinator for the behind-the-scenes work on this, these two bills. And they've been starting to have more meetings with the governor's office, which is a really good sign. Beginning of session, we weren't getting meetings with the governor's staff. So, and then also, we've had representatives from the governor's office attend some of the lobby meetings with staff as well. So I think there's progress, but I'm not, I'm not going to make any bets on where that stands right now.
Yeah. Yeah, they're just, for some reason, taking this very heavy-handed regulatory approach instead of, you know, addressing the, the lack of workforce, which is really the main issue driving the lack of housing. There's no workers, no people to build it. I mean, and so there's no legislation working on workforce development in the trades. Nothing. Instead, they're just going on this, you know, and as we provided in the testimony, every variance that was applied for in the past five years has been approved. And it's not even that many variances. So it's not a big issue. It's certainly not a barrier. But unfortunately, there's just kind of this, this case out of Chautauqua that, you know, is one example of how variances were standing in the way the city was standing in the way of approval of an affordable housing project. And it's, you know, casting everyone in a bad light. But again, so the state is not, in my opinion, doing anything that's going to address the cause of the housing shortage. What's that?
I know workforce isn't an immediate problem, but funding for infrastructure is another huge barrier, and making land ready for development requires pipes and roads.
These are the big.
I don't want you to say there's only one root cause, but.
It's not one root cause. They're not addressing any.
There are a lot of upstream causes. There are a lot of upstream causes that have nothing to do with the regulatory process in a jurisdiction.
Right. And we just cannot... So the League is doing a great job. I mean, the other group that's advocating, I mean, for a different reason, but with the lead is the environmental community. So it's kind of that the city's environmental community and legislators with common sense versus everyone else.
It'll be interesting to play out. If you just want a fun activity, go to the bill, and you'll see the roster of opposition. It's from cities and, yes, environmental activists. And it's from Portland. It's from southern Oregon. It's from the coast. I mean, it is wide, or excuse me, wide-reaching of the opposition. So we will see how this plays out.
And the preservation communities oppose it as well.
And the preservation, yes, in which our local preservation society also provided opposition to. One positive note coming out of housing. So the Governor's Housing Production Advisory Council initially was made up of not necessarily any local voices. However, they are staffing with subject matter, excuse me, subject matter experts to support those different work groups. And we have also volunteered Eric Olson and Jessica Nono to be subject matter experts at the state. So they will be, when these work groups are meeting, if they need technical examples, if they need deeper understanding on code, staff will be available from different cities throughout the state to offer an opinion or just kind of the boots-on-the-ground understanding. We will be staffing the land development permit applications as well as the availability of land, those two subgroups, which is if the bills land the way they are, we are still going to be actively trying to create a path forward for more housing options in the state of Oregon for the next two years. So this council is not going to stop at the end of session. So we will continue our conversation, our efforts, as well as telling the Lake Oswego story at that state-level stage.
Thank you. I know, and I'll get back to you on that letter, too.
Tolling. So we're going to pivot to tolling. Is there any questions for housing before I move on? Okay, so big announcements the last two weeks about tolling. The governor has announced toll collections to be paused until January 26, 2026, excuse me. It's obviously a major win for our region after all the coordination that has been going on just to create more conversation of what is the plans for ODOT. It's a great win, but we have a lot more questions. They are going to be creating a Subcommittee on Transportation Planning, which are the representatives. So our question is, will there be a local voice? What is the, if there's work products that come out of that committee, how will that inform ODOT's plans right now? Also, ODOT will continue to work on their environmental assessment for 205. So we want to know how, when this group is working, where does this play into this larger picture? And then also the future for Rose Quarter, other improvements along I-5. What does this mean for the bridge from Washington to Oregon as well? So we have questions, but we want to continue to be at the table raising our concerns, but also bringing solutions. And that is what we are advocating for, is more solutions at a local voice of the local communities. So from the staff perspective, we will continue our staff coordination meetings. The engineering team will continue to be working on things for NEPA as well. We will also continue to work with the staff coordination meetings that have been going on at the policy level with Clackamas County. So those who were working on the letter that came forward as an ask. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, the C4, will have their retreat in June, and that tolling will be a conversation at the retreat, which the mayor will be at. And then the last thing, in the meantime, while we are waiting to see what happens with this committee, the coordinating efforts across Clackamas County is we are going to have an op-ed by the electeds advocating to have a local voice while we have time before these plans are finalized for what this committee is going to be working on.
And Mad, do you know, the pause of the tolling, is it going to, the Abrenathy is going to continue the construction? While they pause the tolling?
On Abrenathy?
Yeah, on Abrenathy. It will continue. Like the work, is the work going to continue? Are they? So it might be done by the time they... So then why?
About tolling?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they're borrowing on this increase in the gas tax to pay for the Abrenathy Bridge.
Then we don't need the tolling because last time what they say was the tolling will finance the Abrenathy.
There are also, I saw something, well, I saw something today or yesterday about that they wanted to raise motor vehicle fees substantially to look at another funding source for highway projects because ODOT has so many projects that they can't pay for. So I think that's, to be seen how they're going to come up with the money.
So I believe, and I'm looking at Director Reeding, I believe Abrenathy is still moving forward. The question will be the 205 lane expansion. The question also that has happened now after the pause is happening is Governor Kotek has requested ODOT to come forward with a funding plan for all the projects that ODOT is working on come July. And what has now happened also is there's been a lot more gaps in the funding than what was previously presented as that tolling was going to solve. So I think this has elevated a larger conversation about how do we fund transportation in the state of Oregon? Does this solve tolling in its entirety? We don't know what the future of tolling is, but how do we fund infrastructure, transportation, that entire system? That's what this committee is supposed to be talking about.
Well, one thing on tolling that I was very, I was pretty actually upset about is that we heard all their little updates, and they always said, oh, well, we don't quite know what we're going to charge people because we're going to do more studies and more studies. And then when you had the open forum with Senator Wagner and Representative Wen and Jules Waters.
Walters.
And she said that she saw somewhere where it could be $30 for somebody to go from Wilsonville to... So if that's inaccurate, my point is, is that if they're holding back without telling people how much it is, and then they lay it on at the last minute, I mean, $30 is going to bankrupt our blue-collar force that we want to build all these frickin' houses. I mean, it's just kind of, we cannot have these... I think it is. I think it is. I think people look myopically in Oregon and have no strategy. So I think, I don't want that to be a surprise where our hard-working people that need to get to work are bearing a huge burden to pay for projects that our leaders can't figure out how to fund more equitably. So anyway, if you're at more of those little chats, developing...
And just to make it more complicated, the, you know, so the, well, we just approved the letter, the RTP projects, you know, whereas the region is updating the RTP, what's being included in the RTP is the RMPP, the Regional Mobility Pricing Plan. Because it was thought that, oh, they, these tolls are what's going to help pay for the projects, and part of the RTP is identifying the funding sources. And now we're kind of coming to the end of that process update and simultaneously going through this process with the legislature and evaluating the pricing. So as the Clackamas County's rep on JPAC trying to suggest that we also, the JPAC table, really start looking at the funding mechanism because there's nothing about VMT, which I think is a direction that... Because that was part of the problem with the EA was that the RMPP wasn't yet in the RTP, and so they couldn't analyze...
The EDC.
Or at my house, we'd say it's a knick-knack, paddywhack.
All these, so the state's plans and then the, you know, metro's plans as the MPO, they got to be synced up. Oh, yeah, I know, okay. Oh, no, no. MPO, the planning organization, metro planning organization.
Clear as mud. Makes so much sense. Which actually is a perfect example of why we want to have this conversation. There's so many nuances, and there's all these plans that are all happening around the same time. And we have gone down this path as tolling is the only option to fund these projects. We are asking for this to be elevated, to be a conversation like this where all the tools are being fairly analyzed and assessed for what is the future funding mechanisms for the entire state of Oregon, not just a one corridor option.
They use the entire alphabet?
We should use A through Z. And then A1, A2, A3.
Right.
So that is what we're advocating for right now. Obviously, it's a huge win that it's on pause, but the work's not done. And what we are asking for is not just we're bringing up problems. We're trying to be a part of the solution and having this conversation.
That's right.
So the next step right now is going to be, we have an op-ed coming out from the Clackamas County mayors. I can circulate that once we have that a little bit more finalized. And then, which is very reflective of our conversation right now, that we want a local voice. We want to be a part of the conversation, but we also need to bring an understanding that this is for long-term funding of projects, too. The mayor will be at C4 Retreat, which will also be a topic is how, or excuse me, tolling. And so we will probably start to make a plan of what our asks are related to that and what we're going to bring to the larger county conversation. And then the last thing as a next step, this week is the deadline for committees need to have had their public hearing and their work session for bills. So in theory, a lot of bills should start dying off. Our concern is the gut and stuff, so when they take a concept and they put it in another one. So especially for those two housing bills, that's what we're going to be watching is where the amendments fall, but then also where they could show up in other places. Final weeks.
Well, yes, and of course, at the Senate, they're still not...
Yes, so we have walkouts currently. We've hit Day 10 for some members.
10 was yesterday, today. And still today?
More.
Well, maybe that's how I'm worried about the -5 and the -6.
Yeah, it may just all drop off.
But that's a big problem for these other...
It is a problem. It is also a problem why we need to also be watching because things can move really fast. And yes, so there has been walkouts. Friday sessions were canceled, and we're going to continue to walk out.
Today, too?
But we had a great time at the Capitol last week.
In the House, where they're still working.
Yeah, so that's all I have. I'll be back in a few weeks, and we're in the home stretch, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, we had Jello at Willamette.
That's the finest schools in the country.
Well, fine, for the dining hall.
At least in Salem.
And the educational system.
Well, I don't know about that, but the food was pretty good. The food was pretty good. Yeah, next on the, next on the agenda is a study session on our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. You know, we are in the third year since this plan's adoption. So Amanda Watson, our Sustainability Program Manager, is here to give us an update on where things are at and where we go from here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and councilors. Is this working? My name's Amanda Watson. I'm the City Sustainability Program Manager. And as the mayor, I just said, I'm here to give you an update on our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, a progress report for the first three years. I wanted to start with a little bit of an introduction to the plan itself. Just for some context, so the city has actually had a sustainability plan for city operations since 2007. So we've been doing sustainability work for a long time. And that plan's focused on providing city services in a fiscally sound, socially responsible and environmentally sound way. And the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan was developed in response to community requests that the city adopt a climate action plan. It was in 2017 when City Council adopted this as a council goal. And then staff worked with a community advisory committee and consultant services to develop a set of climate action recommendations, which were then incorporated into the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan that City Council adopted in May of 2020. So the plan, we call it the SCAP for short. It's not a great acronym, but it works. It includes goals and strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and strengthen Lake Oswego's resilience to the impacts of climate change. And the real difference, well, the main difference between the Sustainability Plan for city operations and this Sustainability and Climate Action Plan is that for the first time, we set these community-wide emissions reduction goals. And that's what's on the slide here. You know, by 2035, having net-zero electricity. 2045, net-zero energy buildings. And 2050, carbon neutrality citywide. And those goals are based on what climate science tells us is the minimum requirement to limit global temperature rise to 1.5 degrees Celsius and avoid the most, you know, devastating, irreversible impacts of climate change. So this is the city version of that kind of standard climate science that we're seeing accepted across the globe. And actions in the plan are both on the mitigation side, which is about reducing emissions, and adaptation, which is about reducing the city's vulnerability to climate impacts that we're experiencing now and that we'll expect in the future. It also takes, you know, building on that legacy of sustainability work. It takes a really holistic view of sustainability, incorporating environmental, social, and economic aspects so that the goal is really to enhance our quality of life, protect the environment, and create an equitable community for current and future generations. So I wanted to take a minute, too, to talk about the role of the city in climate action because, you know, climate change is a global problem, as we all know, and we are a small piece of that pie, right? But it requires action from all of us to address this challenge. It's, you know, government at all levels, including the city, but also federal and state government, you know, our metro and county partners. It involves action from businesses, organizations, and individuals. And so when we talk about the city's role, kind of what can the city do here? We have a role in leading with sustainability in our own operations. So we're reducing our own carbon footprint, and we're modeling what's possible for others to do. We are facilitating and supporting climate action by businesses, organizations, and residents in our community through programs and policies, right, that either require actions or make actions possible. And then we're advocating for climate action through our relationships with other governments and organizations. So, you know, the city has a really important role to play here. And then I also, you know, in the report itself, you'll see that it highlights actions taken by others in our community. And I thought it's really important to lift up that fact that there's others moving in the same direction. And, you know, community partners like the Lake Oswego School District, like the Sustainability Network, who you heard from folks in public comment today, the Oswego Lake Watershed Council, and individuals across our community are all helping us meet these community-wide goals. So turning to the plan itself, the plan is organized around nine goals or strategies that help us to meet these broad emissions reduction goals. And there's 63 specific actions that meet each of these goals. So, you know, when we turn to look at the progress report, the first three years of implementation, our report card is looking good. So out of those 63 actions, two-thirds of them, we've made at least some progress on. 10 are already complete, or they're, you know, complete and ongoing programs and initiatives. 33 actions are in progress, and 20 have not yet been started. So in the next slides, I'm going to just take these categories one by one, give you a little bit of an overview of what we're talking about. And there'll be a chart showing you kind of actions that are in progress, not started and completed, and then I'll talk about next steps. So focusing on the first goal is reducing transportation emissions. And actions to reduce transportation emissions focus on improving public transit, biking and walking infrastructure to reduce vehicle miles traveled, and also supporting the adoption of electric vehicles across our community. You'll see, this is one of two categories in the plan or goals in the plan that have a large number of actions, so transportation emissions and energy. But we still are in progress on a majority of the actions here. Some highlights are that the Engineering Department has a number of pedestrian pathway projects in progress now thanks to council's approval of the street maintenance fees, thanks in part to council's improvement of the street maintenance fee to dedicate additional resources to that work. The city is working on electrifying our city fleet. We currently have eight electric vehicles and 12 hybrids in the city's fleet of 170-odd vehicles, so making progress, but also room to grow there. And we're installing EV chargers at city's facilities. We now have 11 chargers, seven of which are available for public use as well. As you heard from the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network earlier, citywide vehicle registration data shows that across the community, EV adoption rates are actually faster, stronger than we'd expected based on our goals in the plan. So we're really on track to meet that, the EV adoption goal. And then finally, I did want to highlight one of the challenges that we're experiencing in the transportation emissions section. So as I mentioned, one of the strategies when we look at reducing carbon emissions from transportation, improving options for folks to... to move around the city um in a low-carbon way, is uh transit is a really important strategy here. And, you know, existing low ridership in Lake Oswego, um, in part due to the low density of our community, um, has resulted in TRIMET proposing uh service reductions for LOs, actually cutting one of the one of the main bus lines that goes through the city. And so that's going to further reduce the accessibility of public transit as a low-carbon um transportation option for the city. And so that that's a challenge we have. Um, the city's been, you know, advocating in in conversations with TRIMET, but just wanted to highlight that to council as um one of the roadblocks that we are experiencing in the transportation section. Um, so moving along to energy efficiency, um, actions that support our goal of reducing emissions from new and existing buildings in Lake Oswego are related to reducing energy use through, you know, building design and operation and using clean and renewable sources of energy. So some highlights here are that we did meet the city's one megawatt goal, um, which is uh was a goal of having one megawatt of solar generating capacity installed across the community by 2021, and we met that. And actually, in the the intervening year and a half, we've doubled um the capacity to just over two megawatts and 200 net metering customers across Lake Oswego. So that was just the, you know, natural growth was was quite quite surprising to get that data from PGE and really great. And I do think that one of the contributing factors there was there's a lot more incentives of economics incentives available for folks to install rooftop solar. Uh, but it also demonstrates that there's room to grow in that area. Um, another highlight is the city is purchasing 100% clean renewable energy from PGE for all of our electricity accounts that are eligible. And as of last month, 55% of our electricity uses being sourced from a new solar generating facility in Eastern Oregon. It just got came online last month, and that was through a power purchasing agreement we did back in 2019. So it's exciting to see that come to fruition. And we can kind of point to that particular facility and say that Lake Oswego helped to make that happen through our our commitment. Water conservation actions, as you would expect, focus on minimizing water loss and uh reducing water usage across the city operations and by residents. And so when we talk about honoring the work of our public uh public works professionals, they play a huge role in this. Um, the water treatment plant staff are working on strategies to kind of reduce water loss across the system. They're doing both an annualized annual citywide analysis um of water usage, but also they have an assessment program that works with residents with really high water bills to understand kind of what's going on and how they can conserve water. So there's a lot that's in progress here. A lot of the actions in this category are ongoing projects anyway, um, but but they're moving in the right direction. And another interesting thing I wanted to highlight is that the new wastewater treatment facility project um would use leverage would leverage recycled water um in the treatment process to reduce the amount of drinking water that would be used for that. So one of the actions we had in this category was around looking for opportunities to use reclaimed water, and that would be one. The next category, protecting natural resources. Um, these actions aim to steward Lake Oswego's natural resources um through protecting and enhancing our urban forest and then maintaining high quality um and healthy water quality in the watersheds. Um, so there's been a lot of progress in that this uh area over the past couple of years, as you know. Um, you the city just completed a State of the Urban Forest Report um end of last year. And now, um, the planning department is embarking on the update to the urban and community forestry plan um based on that data and other work. Um, you also approved the new uh the city's first natural areas habitat management plan last year, so that also relates to stewarding our natural resources. Um, and in terms of work, you know, that's happening across the community on this, um, there is a a huge amount of volunteer work and and city work through the city's Habitat Enhancement Program, the Stewardship Program, Friends Groups, Watershed Council, um, that are all pulling in the same direction around restoring natural areas, right? Pulling invasives, planting um native species and and really stewarding the natural areas. So that is is great work that's underway and that continues on that. I wanted to highlight for this section. The next goal is around reducing exposures to toxins for city staff and the public. And this focuses on mainly on responsible purchasing and exploring opportunities to reduce emissions from non-road equipment, so not vehicles, but things like landscaping equipment in particular. Um, and most of the cities um work in these goals so far has focused on gas-powered landscaping equipment and facilitating that transition away from gas-powered equipment to electric alternatives. The city's really been playing in a good leadership role here. Um, in 2021 and then 2022, um, City Council approves uh contracts for multi-site landscaping um in the right-of-way and then for parks that were all electric. Um, so it's kind of nice to model that, right, for the rest of the community, um, that there are companies out here that provide the service and folks can understand and see the benefits of the electric equipment out in the community. Um, Parks and Recreation has also been doing a really great job to research and try and purchase equipment of their own that's all electric. And they now have 26 pieces, including four mowers. So they're really um building up the amount of equipment that they have in their own uh maintenance facility. And then, you know, the other actions here that are not yet started um have some some progress, um, they relate to having kind of purchasing policies in place. And right now, we don't have the policies, but we do have practices in departments to look at choosing, you know, less toxic chemicals, for example, and recycled content furniture. So it's happening, but they're not yet started in the sense that we don't have a documented policy at this time. Uh, waste reduction actions um focus on encouraging reuse, repair, and donation of goods, reducing single-use plastic and food waste, and supporting local food production and recovery. Um, so some highlights here are the city's Library of Things, which I love talking about because I don't know, not everyone knows about it. And I think it's a really amazing program um to help reduce, you know, uh unnecessary consumption and waste by really promoting sharing and reuse. So library cardholders can check out tools, games, an electric leaf blower, an induction cook stove, all sorts of things that they might, you know, use just once or twice or be thinking about getting. Um, and it helps to reduce the amount of items that end up in the landfill if folks, you know, buy an air fryer and decide they don't want to use it more than once. Um, so that's a really great program. Um, this past year, the library also added a seed collection to seed library to their collection, which helps um support goals um in the reduced waste section around supporting local food production. Um, and we're also supporting, you know, local organic and sustainable gardening and farming programs um through the CSA program, Community Gardens, and other activities at Lusher Farms. So there's a lot happening in the reduced waste section as well. Um, and the community side, one of the pictures in the slide here is from one of LOSD's cafeterias. The Lake Oswego School District now has all Oregon Green School certified green lunchrooms. Um, so they did a lot of effort um to reduce waste in their cafeteria and involve students in waste audits and all sorts of really neat ways to get that certification from the state level. Enhancing public education, this is one of the, there's only three goals in the in this category, but we've actually made a lot of progress here. Um, a couple of the highlights are that in 2022, we launched um the city's uh Residential Sustainability Certification Program, Eco Home LO, which supports community members to take action to be more sustainable, you know, at home and in their everyday lives. It's sort of an educational tool. Um, and uh the Sustainability Advisory Board partnered with a number of other community organizations to hold the city's first and second um Lake Oswego Sustainability Resource Fair in the past two years as well, which is is getting momentum and is um involved. The first year is 20-plus organizations, and and this year, 30 different organizations talking about sustainability, what they were doing, and how community members could get involved. So there's a lot of good stuff happening around public education um and meeting our goals there. Um, we have a goal related to improving employee health and engagement, and this focuses on a a couple of different things. One is training city staff to really empower them to understand and to apply our sustainability goals in their everyday work. Um, but it's also providing support for employees to, you know, reduce waste around the workroom um and choose low-carbon and active transportation. There's a lot of different strategies in this category, but they're all focused on city staff. Um, some highlights are that we do have sustainability training as part of the city's new um employee orientation program, which is actually happening tomorrow. Um, and uh our new city hall building included a lot of facilities to support low-carbon transportation. So we have a a bike locking, a bike parking area, and we have a shower and locker room to support folks who are commuting to work by bike. Um, and we have EV charging stations and designated carpool spots in the parking lot. Um, one of the challenges we have to our employee health and engagement goals are we have a goal related to reducing peak time commuting. Um, and so emissions associated with um staff getting to work. And a majority of our our trips, we do a um a survey per DEQ every couple of years about um how how our employees get to work. Um, and a majority of them travel alone by vehicle. Um, and and it's, I think it's 84% and was 84.5% last year or last year when we did it. So it's been steady. Um, and in that time, so 2018 to 2021, we saw the number of folks taking transit or biking to work fall um as the same time that we saw people, you know, continue to to drive to work alone at the same rate. So this is connected to that transportation challenge. I, you know, mentioned earlier that we, it it's going to be difficult for us to see progress on this particular action um until we see improvement in the biking infrastructure and public transit, not only in LO, but also in surrounding communities. So it's really looking regionally at at something like that. There is something, you know, potentially encouraging eligible employees to take advantage of the telework policy where they can, um, could help um with the commuting goal, but but it's that larger, you know, transit and and biking infrastructure as well that will be needed to to get there. So our final goal relates to climate adaptation, and these actions focus on protecting our community and our natural resources from the impacts of a changing climate. So, you know, increased temperature, changes to participation precipitation patterns, and increased risk of wildfire and extreme weather. Um, these images are from uh some of the extreme weather that we and wildfire smoke that we experienced in the past couple of years here in LO. Um, so some progress in these actions that I wanted to highlight is that the fire department is offers free home assessments for homes that are in the, what we call the wildland urban interface um to help residents reduce wildfire risk on their property. And they're doing a lot of great outreach and education through that program. And the engineering and planning departments recently collaborated to implement a flood management area permit to facilitate flood-resistant development. And then finally, we are in the process um of updating the city's Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan in partnership with Clackamas County. Um, and that is going to uh account for current and projected climate impacts. And we'll have a new action that's related to public education for extreme heat and wildfire smoke. So um, there is definitely, um, there's a lot of actions in this plan that are in this section of the plan that are in progress or not started yet, but that is uh being catalyzed through that Natural Hazard Mitigation um plan update process. And so a lot of it will will be moving from the not started to in progress very soon. Great. So that's just a summary of kind of where we are, a snapshot of where we are in each of our goals now. Um, I did want to take a minute here just to um note sort of what's what's happening now, what's happening this year that will continue to build on that progress. Um, and this relates to city councils, you know, one of your initiative 2023 initiatives that will build on this progress. So you did adopt a goal around climate action and this initiative around integrating climate action into um city, the city's work, right? The different um decisions that we make. These are particular categories around uh city projects and capital improvement planning. And a couple of the um projects that relate to this are that Public Works is working on developing a fleet purchasing policy that takes an EV-first approach. So it would, you know, require departments to look first at an electric vehicle and make if it fits their needs to purchase that rather than a gas card version. And so that would help us to meet, will help us to meet our fleet electrification goal. And related to integrating sustainability into capital projects, um, over the next year, year and a half, we'll be working on updating and adopting um high-performance building guidelines. We had a guidelines from 2015 that just need a relook and um kind of formalization um to help integrate sustainability from the start into city capital projects to make sure it can be, you know, built into the budget um and and the project design early on so that it does not, you know, sustainable sustainability measures are not then getting, you know, value engineered out later on. Um, we know that often um certain sustainability measures for our projects, say, you know, rooftop solar or um going all-electric versus using some gas-powered equipment. Sometimes that can be a higher upfront cost, even though the, you know, lifetime cost um is comparable or lower. But um we'll need to make those decisions early on in the project to understand and and build a budget appropriately. Um, and then finally, I mentioned staff sustainability trainings also underway, and will help um advance several of our goals. So based on the progress report on kind of our, the scan of, you know, where are we doing well, where are we making a lot of progress? Where are we facing some challenges? And where are there opportunities, right, based on what might be happening at the state and federal levels? Um, this is a set of recommendations for next steps for implementation. And I'll just briefly go through each of them, but also would love to um get council's thoughts and and any other questions you may have on next steps. Um, so the first recommendation has to do with our EV adoption and uh EV charging infrastructure goals. We have several different goals related to EV charging infrastructure that will require, you know, collaboration with other partners, right? So our local electric utility, PGE, developers and property owners. And so um it's really important that we have a strategy that, you know, identifies what are the needs in Lake Oswego related to EV charging in our community, right? We know that some folks have chargers at home. Some folks have barriers to having charging at home, right? If you live in a multifamily community, for example. Um, so we need to identify what the specific needs are, but then outline the role of city and the city and those other partners, right? And identifying um funding needs and potential barriers um will help us to to understand kind of what what does the city need to do and how can we work together with others to build um public EV charging across the city that supports further um uh further adoption of electric vehicles by folks that can't currently get them, right? We're seeing a good growth, I think, just naturally, of folks that are able to have a charger at home or have a charger at work. But um we won't, we won't be able to provide the opportunity for others unless there is good charging infrastructure. It's a little bit of a chicken and egg with with EVs and chargers, but um the idea of being a a strong public charging network enables more people to be able to access an electric vehicle. Um, secondly, um, the recommendation is to continue to expand clean energy use and availability, in particular, um, looking at rooftop and community solar. Um, this is because, you know, burning fossil fuels to power our homes and buildings is um continues to be one of the largest sources of emissions in Lake Oswego. And, you know, the grid is getting cleaner due to state mandates. So because of this, building electrification is a really significant opportunity um to reduce emissions and also improve, you know, home health and safety at the same time. Um, rooftop solar is also a really promising strategy because there's a resilience aspect to it. Um, when when paired with solar and batteries, um, that provides resilience in the event of power outages. And that right now, there's really significant clean energy incentives um available for residents and businesses through the Federal Inflation Reduction Act. And so um this is a time for us to focus on these strategies so that we can um make sure that folks in our community can take advantage and the city can take advantage of some of these incentives and grant programs that are available in the next couple of years. The third recommendation relates to the Eco Home LO program, which is underway. And actually, this is already underway, but um the so Eco Home LO can be a really effective tool for public engagement, you know, and uh education to support sustainability across our community. Um, but based on the feedback from initial users, um, we've been in the process of making improvements to our website just to streamline it a little bit, uh make it easier to read so that someone comes to the website, they understand the program, they can sign up easily. Um, so this is underway, um, and once we are finished with the updates, um, we'll need to uh, we'll need some additional communications and outreach to really um grow the number of participants and and the outreach of the program. It's, we have a just a handful of users right now, which are dedicated users, providing feedback, engaged with it. But um if we really want to see the potential of this program, we'll need a lot more um kind of focus on increasing um participation and getting it out there. The next recommendation is one that that city council has seen before. This is actually relates to a city council goal of last year. Um, and that's that, you know, we need to refine and expand the adaptation actions in our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. Um, in particular, um, you know, related on the latest information we have about climate change impacts in Oregon, learning from um the the experience that we had over the past couple of years with extreme heat and wildfire smoke. Um, and the plan also currently doesn't detail strategies related to energy resilience. Um, and that's increasingly important as we're seeing more extreme weather, right, that can cause power outages and as we're electrifying buildings and transportation and really rely on that electricity grid. Um, so this is, we we've done a lot of the work. The Sustainability Advisory Board has provided some strong recommendations, but this will just be a next step that when we are coming to actually go into the plan and make updates to the plan itself, we will want to make sure to to update the this section. Related to update. Related to updates, it is time to update our community greenhouse gas emissions inventory. Our last inventory was done in twenty twelve with two thousand and six data. So the hope is that a lot has changed in the positive sense then, and we will see an improvement in our numbers. But we don't have, we don't have the latest data. And so it will be helpful for us to be able to track the progress towards our community-wide emissions reduction goals and identify, you know, which sectors have the most opportunity and are the biggest priority for emissions reductions. It will help us to have that data. The Sustainability Advisory Board also provided the input. They want us to update the methodology used for this, which is a good recommendation. Our current inventory is a consumption-based emissions inventory. And they have asked for a sector-based emissions inventory to complement that, which I think would be a good way to go as well. Finally, the last recommendation is, you know, wherever possible, we should establish measurable targets for goals and actions in the plan. And related to the recommendation for this, this is about making sure we can, we can track progress and communicate our progress to the public, right? Improve the accountability towards it. And it will also assist with budgeting and work planning, right? So that as departments are planning out their work for the year, as we're looking at the city's budget, we can very clearly say, you know, here's, here's what we need to do this year to meet our interim targets, for example. Not every action in the plan necessarily lends itself to having a, you know, measurable target, but certainly around fleet electrification, around energy, you know, and buildings and in terms of missions targets. Those will really help us to track progress and maintain progress towards the plan more easily. So. Thank you. I would love to hear if you have any questions. I know that was a lot of information. But yeah, if you had a chance to read through the plan and have any questions on the specific actions or categories, but also on the recommendations themselves, I would, I'm open for feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. While everyone is warming up, I'll share that Amanda shared this, a portion of this presentation with her, gave this update to the Sustainability Advisory Board last night. And they, you know, really strongly supported the recommendations outlined here. And we also heard from a representative of that company, Storm, Storm Landscaping, that, you know, has that contract with our, and so, because they wanted to hear how's it going with the electric equipment, you know? That was the first thing for that company. It was very interesting. You know, he said that the company, and even I think the city, Public Works, I mean, they were very skeptical going into that when we approved that contract. And they were like, oh, we don't think this is going to be a good idea at all. And they had been so pleasantly surprised. They love the equipment. And they said that with the exception of the backpack blowers, the equipment is just as efficient as the gas equivalent. And the workers like it better because it's less noisy and it doesn't have the emissions. And they're also using this equipment. So Mary's Woods also has the electric kind of contract, but they wouldn't have done any of it if it wouldn't have been for us approving the contract because that enabled them to make the investment. So they did have to make some substantial investments in their facility just to be able to do this contract and Mary's Woods. And they found one company that specializes in just electric lawn care equipment. And they've been working with them. And so they have, you know, the big riding mower that's electric and all of that. Anyway, so very, very positive. And so he was so appreciative because now it's kind of taking their business a little different direction. And, but yeah, their biggest, the impediment to being able to do it for all their work was cost, because they'd have to do a big facility upgrade. And the batteries still remain very, the batteries are expensive and the logistics there. But otherwise, using the equipment and all of that, aside from in the rainy season, the backpack blowing, that's the one challenge. But besides that, it's all just as good. So it's good. So yeah, it was, that was great news. And, you know, I think hearing your presentation and looking, reading through your staff report just highlights the importance of all these community partnerships. And that's how the plan was designed, but between the city itself and then all the departments within the city, the school district, the business community, and all these community organizations that play a role. I think the city's making really great progress thanks to how you kind of, you know, thread the needle and connect all these, these different aspects of the, of the community, but also because of those strong partnerships that we enjoy and hearing about the great things the school district is doing. We heard from our youth representative on SAB last night about the, they now have a sustainability class that they're teaching at LO High School. So all the great things that these partners are doing that tie in to this plan are helping us achieve some of these, making good progress on these objectives. And so just thank you for, for your work leading that process. I know it's, it takes time, you know? We wish it all happens, you know, like this, but a lot of it is changing a bit of the culture. I was great to see like that new employee orientation in regards to sustainability. You know, it all makes a difference. We do things a certain way for decades and decades and decades. And we come in one day and we have a different way of doing it. It takes time to adapt. So anyway, thank you for leading that work. Okay, Councilor Afkan.
I want to repeat all the compliments that Mr. Mayor gave you, except thank you. I have a question for you. Of all those projects that haven't started, what would you need in order to get them started?
Great question. There are, there's kind of a number of different reasons. Some of them weren't started. For example, one of the actions is around getting solar compacting trash cans in parks. And parks actually tried it and found it wasn't a good fit. It took a lot more labor and it just wasn't the right tools. There's a small handful of the not-started actions that either aren't the right solution anymore for one reason, right? We don't have a good path forward. But a lot of it is capacity. It's staff capacity, right? So a lot of the, the buildings-related actions, the energy-related actions, it just takes a lot of time to do the analysis, to figure out, you know, kind of what's the best way forward here or to start a new program, right? A couple of the building or the energy-related actions are related to creating and running a home energy score program, and that would take dedicated staffing. So I think our biggest, biggest challenge right now is staff capacity and resources on the ones that aren't moving forward. Then, then there's a little bit of, you know, the, I mentioned the TRIMET and the transportation. There's some that rely on action from other partners. But yeah, I would say if there is a common thread, it's, it's staff capacity right now.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have a comment for you. When I see it develop a citywide EV charging strategy, and if hopefully tonight we say yes, absolutely go for it, it's going to take a year to bring that recommendation back. Then as a city council, we have to talk about budget. Then once we talk about budget, then we're going to include it in two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-seven. So by the time we get any charging stations, it's going to be six years from now. And I think we need to do better than that. So I hear other councillors saying no, no. But can you explain to me, like?
That's not a mayor question, so.
No, I'm not asking, I'm not asking here, I'm asking the mayor.
The problem is that there are, the problem, the opportunity is there's actually quite a lot of federal funding right now available for charging. We're just not well poised to receive it at this point because we don't have the strategy. And we also have been working with our partners at PGE about how could we address the issues related to those folks who don't have the ability to have charging in their own home. And so far, there's a really mismatch between the places where we have multifamily developments and the places where PGE has the right power poles. So part of our strategy has to be not related to us paying for it. I guess that's the other thing, and I think Amanda said this, is there may be some aspect of the charging infrastructure that really is the city's responsibility to purchase, install, own and operate, but much of it is actually facilitating the construction and deployment of charging infrastructure by the private sector.
Yeah.
And so again, I don't think this is about the city solving the problem for everyone in Lake Oswego. This is about what's our strategy as a community for deploying this infrastructure. And then we can work on where does the city make investments in its own facilities versus how do we encourage or support from a regulatory or grant writing perspective, the work of the private sector. There's charging, I don't know if you've noticed, there's charging going in all over the community, the new seasons that's out in Palisades, they're putting in chargers without any action by the city. And so I don't think we should assume that ultimately, we're going to have the biggest slice of this problem.
Well, I think there's already more private chargers in the city than there are city chargers.
We have a lot of options at this end of the town, but not much over at Lake Grove Side. And those are the areas that we know we're going to need them. What are we doing in order to encourage private parties or ourselves to get some charging stations there?
But right now, we don't have anything that underpins or guides how we would go about making these decisions. Where, what's the optimal, what's our target on? And we've got, we've got no ability to compete successfully for the grant money that's available because we're not ready to apply for it. So it's not going to be six years, councillor, but we do need to do the work first so that we can be competitive.
The reason I said six years is we need a recommendation, that's going to take a year. Then we have to budget it. And I can guarantee that we're not going to have money in the next two years. Then it's going to go the next two years. And then we have to design it. Then we have to construct it. So that's how long it's going to take.
Some of it will take that long, but a lot of it won't. I mean, and we're installing, when we do a new project, we're installing charging infrastructure. There's going to be charging infrastructure at the LoReC. But again, I think the other thing is we haven't made strategic decisions about where, what's the city's role and how do we best get it done? It may not be us doing it.
So councillor Afkan, I mean, to get at his, the main point, in these various action items, if we're just looking at the EV charging strategy, is that something that we would just do internally or we, you know, bring someone on to?
Well, I think we work with the Sustainability Advisory Board and our other community partners to design the strategy.
Okay. Because I mean, that's the, the limiting factor, I mean, in all of these.
Yes, there's Amanda.
There's Amanda.
Yeah.
And, and so if we, if, if support is needed, you know, financially or whatnot, just to?
There's so many resources out there right now pointed at this problem. We're going to work with our partners for grant. There's, there's nonprofits in our state that will provide technical assistance. We're not going to try to, we're not going to make this up, right? There's a lot of resources out there we're going to take advantage of. But again, charging, you have an EV, I know I've seen you charging. Charging isn't charging, isn't charging. That's the other thing is the technology you're going to deploy is going to be specific to the situation, right? So I'm not going to put in a level-two charger, right? If I am only going to have somebody in the building for half an hour, right? That, so that's part of the conversation though, is we have to have. We also have to know where the power is available. Because that's the other limiting factor is the grid. So I, there's a lot, I think we can get a strategy done. I think we can become successful in competing for grants. I think we can integrate it into our facilities. But again, I don't think we should assume that the city is going to be the primary actor. The city may be.
I'm not suggesting that, but we can encourage, provide incentives, provide guidance, make it easy for them. So I, I hear a lot of concerns and roadblocks from a whole lot of people as opposed to this is what we have to do, how do we enable it?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. But I also think that, I think we have some folks who, how do I say this the right way? I think we need to think about things like how do we encourage a multifamily property owner to make the investment? So how do we work with the tenants to encourage them to work with the owner of their property? As opposed to how do we go in as a city government organization and try to solve the problem? How do we facilitate and expedite that action as opposed to assuming that it's got to be the government that steps in to solve the problem? How do we create the conditions as a government entity so that the private sector can do what they do best?
I'm a hundred percent on board with that. How do we enable them to make it happen? And all of these action items are great. I still am not clear how we're going to enable them. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Peace.
Okay, councillor Winless.
Great presentation. There's a lot of information in here, and we could probably take hours going through a number of things. I, it seems like you have to be both an educator, a psychologist, a sociologist, because it, it seems like there's a huge opportunity for changing behaviors, which unless we have the core group changing behaviors, we're probably not going to get very far. We can legislate, we can try to get policies in, but if you don't have a bus that goes through town, it's pretty hard to have people use public transportation. I mean, it's just, some of those things are harder, they're against our, kind of, we don't have control over that. But we can, I love the educational piece, I think the school part, and to have all the schools being certified, I think that's absolutely wonderful. I guess I want to go back up to your higher level part. When you say on your first slide, twenty thirty-five or whatever it is, that we're going to have all of our businesses, the goal is to have all of our businesses be no net emissions from electricity use. I don't think, if you surveyed a thousand people in Lake Oswego, there may be three people, maybe ten, that could answer that question. And I think that's part of the educational part, that I think we need to be, and one of the groups that you didn't mention that we should be working with is the Chamber. And I think we need to be reaching out because I think the, the sustainability and environmental group in Lake Oswego is wonderful, but I think it's pretty small. And I think until we get our business community on board with tools that they can use and to, Martha's point, that we've got to get buy-in from businesses and so on to make the investment. And if they know what's going on, and I think many of them do, but I think that's the momentum that we, we need to have. But I have no idea how we're going to have, what even no net emissions means for electricity usage. And I'm sitting on city council, so I'm, maybe I'm the one educated person here, which is fine. But I have to say that I'm probably the majority moron in the group. So, and the other part that I don't understand completely is I know we're using, what do you call it? It's sustainable energy from PGE. So that's great. But they're not making enough energy for everybody to be sustainable, for using sustainable energy, right?
Not currently.
Not currently. Where are they? Five percent? Seven percent?
They're much higher, much higher than that. I wish I had it off the top of my head.
Thirty percent? I know we're hydro.
Hydro is at least fifty percent of their portfolio. So I think they're closer to eighty percent. And they have a state mandated goal of being carbon neutral by twenty forty.
Twenty forty, that's what I was going to say. Actually, this first goal is quite achievable. I do agree with you on the communications piece. And I also failed to mention, we have another study session just focused on clean energy at the end of next month. So we'll do a deep dive on kind of all the terminology and all of that. But this first one is now very achievable because there's a state mandate that electric utilities, including PGE, have a hundred percent, all of their electricity is sourced from a hundred percent renewable sources. So that's when we say net zero, we're saying the sources are renewable. So it's coming from wind, solar, hydro versus natural gas or coal, for example.
Right, okay.
So we're close on that one. And then there's a lot of PGE programs that, you know, customers, businesses included, can sign up for to opt in to a hundred percent already, which is what the city is doing. So, so yeah, but I agree.
Is that electricity more expensive than other electricity?
There is a slight premium, yep.
So what is our, what's our upcharge for that, for us having this policy?
Five dollars.
I mean, do we even have an idea?
I don't remember anymore. I do, I do know that part of the reason we went to purchase the portion, because we actually now own a piece of a solar farm. And part of the reason we made the decision to move away from the old way and to the purchases that we had more, at least rate stability, less volatility in the electricity market for that purchase.
Right.
I'll email you that because I do have that data.
We did make a conscious decision, and this was before my time, before your time here, a long time ago, to pay extra to be able to say, to be able to purchase a hundred percent renewable power for city operations.
No, and I'm all for that. I just, I just, when you look at it, it's kind of like people buying those green energy credits corporations and they buy from the same supplier who's selling it fifty times so people can put on their corporate.
This is different than that, though, yeah.
It is different. But what I'm saying is that's out there. And I want to make sure that, again, it's that educational piece for people to. And I wanna make sure that, again, it's that educational piece for people to know what we're talking about and how that helps us sell the message. Because once people buy onto it, I think it becomes standard practice and then it becomes a way of life. And then nobody even has to talk about it, cause we're just doing it. And so I guess that's the transition that, that I'm trying to figure out. When you say that the, the solar is one megabyte and then now it's two, do we know what that is as a total? Are we using a thousand or a hundred megabytes? Watts, megawatts, sorry, megawatts.
Yeah, so it was, that's a generating capacity. So that's of all the rooftop solar that's installed across the community together, that is one, is now two megawatts of power.
Right.
In terms of the number of like, I don't know, it's not, buildings, let's say, so accounts. That's, that's 201 individual accounts. So that could be a commercial account or it could be a household. And I don't have that disaggregated data from PGE right now, although we should soon. Sorry? That's, it's two total megawatts in, oh, of, of energy.
Of the total, because here's, here's where I, it's great. So we have two, wonderful. Is it two out of 10? We're making progress. If it's two out of 2,000.
Yeah, it's more like two out of like, what, 14 plus, 14 for the city. I need, I need to get those numbers for you. But yeah, it's a small percentage.
Right, but when you're talking about the, the goals, and I think, I, I think that's, I think you guys are spot on on, on what we're, what you're working on. But I just think that the, when you have a goal, you have to say, okay, Lake Oswego, if we're gonna do this right, we need, you know, we need to offset 14,000. So let's see if we can't even get up to a thousand by the end of whatever. Just so, I think this community understands metrics. And most people have a very low tolerance for white noise, what might I call it? Where, let's just all forge together. And then they go back home and they use their gas mower and their, I mean, they, they go back to their old habits. But if they knew this is what the offset would be, I think that's, that's the helpful part. And I, so I'm, I think finding out more, educating is, is a key factor. And then from the, the EV strategy, I do think that we need to, somebody has to be the quarterback on that for Lake Oswego. And I think we could probably be a good, a good person, at least to get groups together so we know who's doing what. And if we could somewhat standardize the effort, meaning that, so not everyone is recreating the wheel to get, you know, I'm always the one to say, hey, let's get everybody together at one table and just talk about it so that we know what maybe the opportunities are and maybe some of the challenges that we have. Because I, we have a family friend that charges at the Public Works Center, because they have two EVs. And it, it's like four dollars a day or something instead, or four dollars a charge versus $60 a charge. Now, when the word gets out and you buy an EV, there's gonna be a lineup at the public workstation. But if they know that there's 60 or 80 places around and, and they have, I think, three EVs, so they can't do all of their EVs at once. My point being is that, again, to councillor Afghan's thing, we need a strategy to put things together so that people know what's out there. But it's a lot of information, I have to say, you presented. Thank you.
Sorry, that was, that was a lot at once, but yeah, thank you.
I don't know how you keep it all straight. That's good you're doing it.
Thank you councillor. Yeah, and I think some of these, these action items that Amanda has outlined kinda work together a bit, like to your point about the, you know, the, the metrics. I mean, perhaps that falls under the supporting, the reporting and accountability for future goals. I agree, that communication piece is, is key, which, you know, feeds into EcoHome. You know, why we created that is a big communication tool so that everyone in the community is aware, you know, of what is going on. And, and it's a really good point you brought up, and I'm glad that, you know, you admitted that, cause that is, these are like general terms that you hear, I don't know if anyone understands.
It's like your acronyms, mayor.
Exactly.
You understand them.
It's a really good point, yeah.
Yeah.
Your councillor Boon.
Thank you, Amanda, good work. And, and that's why you talk about education. We have to educate people and define terms and stuff like that. I think, like, an example to councillor Wenland, Oregon in 2020, consumed 60,000 gigawatt of, of electricity. And I think Oregon, in 2020, the figure, 63% of our electricity came from renewable energy. So this is great. I mean, we are heading to the deadline of 2050. We just need to all work for carbon neutrality. And the other thing is, I've been talking to my friend at PGE. I love them.
Your new friend?
Yeah, they're my friends. And, you know, they have a project to turn most of the public pole and stuff into charging station. And that's a project they have. And I think, I hope, pretty sure maybe Amanda knows about it. And we can work with them and to respond to councillor Afghan, that we don't need to pay for that, the city. But we have our partners, we'll develop things like that. We need, you know, that. And my only thing about all this is the, it's money. Who can afford an electric car? That's all the problem. It's just some folks in LO, like councillor Afghan, have a BMW or the mayor or, you know, when my friend is driving, we, you know, we have to be realistic and doesn't, we should not make this as a trend, like trendy, we are rich, we can afford it, we are poor, we won't afford it. And, and also to, to go from there is to develop public transportation. If we, if many people can go to work on their bike or using public transportation, we don't need cars, you know, in Europe, they're like lot of, yeah, I know, 2,000. I think I'm not.
I'm just gonna say this out loud, but it is possible to own an affordable electric vehicle.
But how? That's a, tell us, like, it's not gonna be a Tesla.
You might not have a, a late model Tesla, but you might have a 2016 E-Golf.
Yeah.
That, that meets most of your needs, that's much, much less expensive to operate than my.
But why would I buy a 2016 when you get a 2023?
Because you can't.
No, that's a day.
The reason you would buy it, I'm, I'm just, I'm not gonna leave this alone, partially cause I have to be able to sleep in my bed later with my spouse. And if I don't combat this, he probably will tell me to sleep in the garage.
I need to debate him, because.
No, it's not a debate. The truth is, an EV, if you purchase it, is actually much less expensive to operate. So if you are low income, and I, I mean this with all sincerity, if you are low income and you get an EV, you will find that the cost of owning and operating the car is significantly lower. This is an equity strategy and we should think of it as an equity strategy.
Okay, so equity strategy, a low, low income family with five kids and this spouse, they cannot buy those car you folks are talking about. Those are for two people. These are five people that need, it's a, a matter of culture. It's like, it's a culture war that's happening here on who's going to Starbucks is the one who are, those are the folks who are driving the electric car versus those who don't have it and who challenge your idea of sustainability, that we can challenge, even using the car, the batteries and all that. What's the cost of having an electric battery? Is it sustainable? Are we gonna sustain? Are we gonna, no, I don't think so. Studies show that in the places even we get all those things, we are using child labor, we are using, violating human rights and everything to get the lithium, to get all this stuff for us. It's one world that's creating this for us. So it's, and I am not, I am a big time climate activist. But I just want us like in, to, I'm pretty sure councillor Wenland is not maybe saying the same thing as me, but I am in parallel with him, that most folks don't understand what we're saying, that it's a, it's a them versus us, like some folks. It's like in the, the culture, the identity politics in America, oh, rural people, they're this. And we, we are the, you know, we have to go slower in what we want, starting in the classrooms, early in kindergarten and stuff, starting to teach the, why we are doing this. The problem is why are we doing this? Not that we should, but why are we doing it? We see that climate change is creating a lot of problems. And we, we should use a pedagogical way of bringing people, but also use affordability, like for people to achieve and to be able to reach, to, you know, having a car that I can drive that's sustainable or using public transportation that's easy, when in Lake Oswego, they're a part of town where you cannot go to the other one. You know, so what we're doing, we also should start in Lake Oswego, there's not, we should have maybe had those, how do we call those, scooters, electric scooter where I can go. No, I'm just saying, I'm like, I, I give ideas, maybe that's not. But to go from one part of Lake Oswego to the other, if you don't have a car, it's a challenge.
Bike?
There's no, if you don't have a bike, and even if you have a bike, there's no bike lane.
Your legs?
Yeah, there's no bike lane. You can be killed by a car biking in Lake Oswego.
But that's part of the plan?
Yeah, okay, yeah, but I just, I'm not criticizing, I'm giving, you know, I'm just saying here.
So bring it back to the, to the action.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the action, yeah, that's where we are coming. So in our sustainability, we should allow folks to be more, let's push climate not to, to stop, to eliminate that line that they're talking about. Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, we can, with metro, we can, the metro president is from Lake Oswego. We have to, to do something, yeah, that's.
If I can, can just respond correctly, I think you're making a good point in that these strategies work together, right? So, you know, we, and EVs are not an electric bullet, right? Or an electric, what's the word? They're not silver bullet, they're not an electric bullet either. They're not the only solution, right? There's, we have to create a, a menu of low carbon transportation options, right? That work for different people. But density is also a climate strategy, right? Part of the reason why we're seeing transit options go in our community is low density, meaning low ridership, right? So, you know, it's about creating livable communities where folks can walk to where they need to go, bike to where they need to go, have an electric vehicle or a public transit or a shared electric vehicle, right? This is a solution that's being used in some cities and apartment complexes to have like a fleet of electric vehicles folk can check out. There's a lot of different ways, right, to, to kind of provide different options that work for people. But, but yeah, I think you made good points about how this all connects together. And, and looking at housing and looking at our transportation system is an important part of it too. EVs are an important piece of the puzzle, but they're not the only one.
And thank you for bringing that up too, cause that, you know, I, as I see Mr. Olson standing out here and working on the housing, you know, our housing needs analysis and production strategy. Like you just said, so much of that, that housing conversation intersects with this climate conversation. And, you know, it's not one of these, these actions here, we don't have, but as we're doing our planning, thinking about our infrastructure investments and, you know, we were looking at the maps, the other meeting about where, and thinking about where we see this more dense, you know, housing. And if there's a way that we can, and we, we approach it from that housing needs, you know, conversation. And, and we think about the affordability of housing, it's kind of just a housing conversation. But if we could find a way to weave in the climate conversation into the housing, you know, conversation, I think that would be helpful, cause it's a huge piece, like you said. I mean, the reason we don't have transit, we're not a dense community, you know? But, and, and housing is a huge piece of sustainability conversation. And in many ways, the community has these values around sustainability. But from the housing point of view, we're a very, we're like the least sustainable community, because we're primarily a community of, you know, a couple of people living in large homes. So if, I think that it's, if there's a way to tie the sustainability conversation into the housing conversation, I think it'd be worthwhile and help, you know, frame these goals, you know, going forward. Cause we're already doing that work and you don't have to do anything. Eric's gonna do it all.
And I do, I do think that those connections are being made, but yeah, certainly can, can keep doing that, yeah.
Okay. Well, we hear resounding support for your list of action items going forward. The, I think just in the New York Times had a great thing about Norway just the other day and how they, they are already like 80%, if anyone saw this, EV. And they talked about how they are having, as, as EV friendly as they are, the same issues that we're talking about here. They don't have the charging stations in the multifamily and they have EV charging, they've put them in the gas stations, but as people go out to their vacation home, the lines are circling all around, cause you know, it's not a five minute, you know, refuel, they're waiting the EV. So as eagerly as they have adopted the EVs, they're running into some of these same practical issues that we're contemplating here. And so there's, the point being, there's many communities we can learn from.
You know how they're paying for a lot of this is their oil revenue services.
We don't need to talk about it.
Anyway, so you have to, you have to tell the whole story, so. Not really? Study your, study it.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, someone have it? Oh, okay, thank you. There's, thank you very much, Amanda. Okay, thank you, everyone. All right. Now, does everyone want, you need to take a break? You ready to move to the hearing? Okay, just wanna make sure. Do you think it's gonna be a short? Okay, I'm just asking if anyone needs to use the restroom. Okay, okay. I'm hearing, no break. All right, so next up, we have ordinance 2908. This is an ordinance on the mitigations for ministerial development. And we're here to conduct a public hearing.
Are you ready, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we are ready, we'll, yes, please, Mr. Boon, thank you. We'll review the hearing procedures.
Read into the record, this is ordinance 2908, an ordinance for the city of Lake Oswego amending LOC 5006008 Utilities. LOC 500703 Review Procedures. LOC 500704 Additional Submitting Requirements and Adopting Findings, which is LU 220031. This is a legislative decision, which is generally a policy decision within the discretion of the city council. Although a legislative decision may be discretionary, it must also comply with applicable state law as well as the applicable statewide planning goals or administrative rules adopted pursuant to ORS Chapter 197. A legislative amendment to the zoning code, development code and development standards must also comply with any applicable provision of the Lake Oswego Conference of Plan. The public hearing process will begin with a presentation by staff and then testimony will be received from the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to testify on this matter? I don't see anybody raising their hand in the audience, is anybody online? No. With that, I'll skip over the time limits then and ask the councillors, please declare if they, if they have any financial conflicts of interest to declare.
No, no, no.
Oh, nobody does? All right, with that, I believe it's senior planner Eric Olson with the staff report.
Thank you, W City Attorney Boon. Good evening, Mayor Buck and city council. I'm Eric Olson, as you know, I'm long range planning manager with the city. We're here today, as Evan mentioned, to conduct a public hearing on a recent proposal to establish a clear and objective process to require public improvements to be provided to mitigate the impacts of ministerial middle housing development. So here's an overview of some of the topics we'll cover during the presentation. I'll provide some background on the process thus far, including relevant requirements and the reason for the code amendments being proposed. I'll give an explanation of the draft code amendments, including a summary of the proposed ministerial mitigation process, how it meets relevant legal requirements and a discussion of some of the limitations regarding the scope of the proposed amendments. We'll then wrap up by asking for council direction on the staff recommendation of the proposal. As some of you may recall, our work related to ministerial mitigation was prompted by a few issues that surfaced last year. So I'll start getting into some of that background right now. While this is not a new issue per se, we always need to meet state requirements under ORS 197 dot 304, 4, that all standards and criteria applicable to housing be clear and objective. This is important, because the code currently does not outline such a process for mitigation requirements, so the city could be vulnerable until we do so. And the most pertinent change, however, was the city's adoption of code amendments to allow middle housing throughout the city in the summer of last year, as you all are very well aware of. Part of what we were required to do for House Bill 2001 was allow middle housing to be developed through a ministerial process, as the city is no longer allowed to require a formal land use approval or a minor development. As the city is no longer allowed to require a formal land use approval or a minor development for middle housing. So we opted not to include public improvement requirements in that larger middle housing code amendment package at the time. And this resulted in a gap in the city's code as the city had no, and still does not have the ability to require that public improvements. Be provided to offset the impacts of additional density through a ministerial process or a typical building permit process. So staff identified a need quickly to establish such a process after the middle housing code was adopted. In order to ensure that new middle housing development is adequately served by public facilities such as utilities and transportation infrastructure. So I'll just do a really quick review of the different types of development review processes that we have at the city. Ministerial development has historically been the process we've used to approve new single family units, duplexes and other residential developments of two units or fewer. As I mentioned though, we now allow triplexes, quadplexes and cottage clusters to be approved under a ministerial development process. This is a fairly straightforward staff level review with no required pre-application, conference, public notice or public hearing. So minor development, on the other hand, requires a more discretionary level of review and includes applications like variances, partitions, subdivisions, lot line adjustments. That increase density, historic review, changes of use, multifamily, commercial and industrial development and development within certain overlay districts. So those minor developments require a public notice and many also require a pre-application conference and a public hearing. And they're also subject to appeal of the DRC or here at council. So currently, we do not have an opportunity in the code to require mitigation or offsetting public improvements for ministerial development. For minor and major development, the city currently applies conditions of approval that are reasonably related to the anticipated impact of a development. Either to alleviate the need for public services or facilities such as water, sewer, parks, open space, streets, sidewalks and pathways. Or reasonably related to eliminating or mitigating a negative impact on the built environment when those impacts are created or contributed to by the proposed development. So these conditions are determined based on legal principles and a consideration of both, both policy and site specific factors. Really, these are, you know, it's important to point out, I guess, really one concept here of rough proportionality. When, that we use to make these types of determinations. And really, this is the concept that the proposed mitigation or the required mitigation must be roughly proportional to the impact of the proposed development. And this is based on some fairly major legal precedents in the Nolan and Dolan cases. So two cases kind of established that precedent for us. So as I mentioned before, staff was directed to draft code amendments to meet our clear and objective requirements for housing. And really to ensure that the impacts on public infrastructure of the additional density for middle housing development are sufficiently, sufficiently mitigated per city policy. And I'll just give a little timeline of the ministerial mitigation project thus far. So as I mentioned last year, in June of last year, we adopted the middle housing code amendments. In July of last year, we were directed, our staff was directed by the planning commission to draft code amendments for a ministerial mitigation process. We held a public hearing on that, at the planning commission on October 10th, where they recommended, tentatively recommended approval. On October 18th, we held a study session here with city council where many of you expressed concerns that that process that we proposed could be overly burdensome to middle housing development. And that that would be treated differently than single family, that middle housing was treated differently than single family under this. So you all directed us to go and talk to local builders and developers to learn whether public improvement requirements did serve as a barrier to middle housing according to those builders and developers. And to talk a little bit about public improvement cost estimates for some different projects that have required public improvements in, in the city. So we had that discussion on March 21st at the last study session. And at that study session, you directed staff to bring forward the previously proposed draft code amendments for a hearing. So that's why we're here today. Those amendments were, or the findings for those amendments were actually approved by the planning commission on April 24th. So that's actually the most recent timeline step. So that brings us to where we're at now, is that, you know, obviously the council hearing for the draft code amendments and I'll start to explain those a little bit. Just a brief outline of the process here. The process requires, you know, the density added through new development is sufficiently mitigated based on public infrastructure planning standards and context. So we're using a fairly simple concept to apply the city's longstanding practice of requiring that public improvements be installed, installed per applicable standards. Depending on the density of the proposed development. So the major difference here is that we really just apply these at the building permit or ministerial stage. Since we no longer have the ability to require them through conditions of approval for middle housing developments of three or more units. Again, I want to stress that the city has typically had the ability to require that these public improvements be constructed to mitigate the impacts of additional density associated with a particular proposal. But because we no longer require minor development approval for middle housing, we do not have that ability currently to require that the added density through middle housing is sufficiently mitigated through public improvements being provided. So the proposed amendments accomplish our goal of meeting the state's clear and objective requirements for housing as they would lay out the simple rationale that improvements must be constructed per city adopted public infrastructure plans. Like the transportation or water systems plan. The amendments also include two different off ramps to allow applicants to formally argue that the required mitigation is not roughly proportional to the extent of their project or proposal. Even if it is clear and objective, they might find that it's not roughly proportional. We'll talk a bit about these off ramps. They account for the fact that, you know, potentially construction of the full right of way improvements may not be roughly proportional to every single proposal. So acknowledging that in some instances, the impacts from a specific proposed development may not be roughly proportional to the full construction of right of way improvements. We've developed two off ramps. Essentially, you know, we have both a staff exception process and a subsequent minor development process if that doesn't sort of work. Included in the proposed amendments to ensure that developments are able to kind of adapt to unique or difficult site conditions. That might preclude the provision of certain public improvements or require different approaches to street design. So in these instances, you know, we have that city engineer exemption, exception, as we call it, which is item K in the draft code amendments. As well as a minor development process that could be applied for if there is no sort of agreement after that first city engineer exception process. So really two opportunities for applicants to argue to the city that things aren't roughly proportional. So I wanted to speak a bit about how the city currently makes determinations of rough, rough proportionality related to the impacts of a proposal when we apply conditions of approval. The city engineer considers how many vehicular trips as well as pedestrian and bicycle trips are likely to be added due to the specific impacts of a proposal under consideration. When those trips exceeded a certain threshold, they can impose additional burdens and concerns for street capacity and public safety for bikes and pets. So historically, the city determined that this additional burden was triggered by developments of three or more units. And we have consistently applied public improvement requirements in that way for many decades now. So this current proposal does not propose to change that policy. And, you know, we've received positive impact or positive input over the years actually for the ongoing policy to, you know, for its ability to mitigate. Those increased traffic impacts that can accompany a new development while preserving the functionality and public safety features of this public street system. So we're not proposing to modify that currently and I'll talk a little bit about specifically what we are proposing. So just wanted to, I guess, clarify once again that we're not proposing to change the applicability of mitigation requirements specifically. For developments of three or more units with this proposal. And the code amendments would continue their, the longstanding policy of the city of applying those to developments of three or more units. So as such, we would really, you know, continue that, again, that longstanding practice. And, you know, I would just kind of note though, that that's really based on what we're proposing currently right now. You know, the longstanding city policy was developed prior to the adoption of middle housing code amendments when developments of three or more units were sort of de facto minor development and required a conditions of approval analysis. So the current proposal would continue that policy and it would not change it. But it would just apply it through sort of a default application of clear and objective requirements as opposed to conditions of approval. So at a prior study sessions, the last time we met here, a question was raised whether the mitigation requirements proposed by our code amendments. Could be extended to apply to the development of single family dwellings and duplexes. Unfortunately, notice of the scope of this proposal's development mitigation requirement. And, you know, in particular, its applicability to developments of three units or more was given to DLCD and individual property owners as required under measure 56. So at the time that this was noticed, the draft code amendments did not include an option for the city to modify the, our ongoing policy. To apply those mitigation requirements to developments of two units or less. So because of what we've noticed so far essentially, and because of our obligations to the state to sort of ensure that folks are given adequate notice to provide public comment. When a proposed code amendment could limit or prohibit land uses in a zone, we would not be able to modify the current proposal in that way. It would have to, you know, sort of maintain that applicability to three units or greater, it couldn't be expanded in terms of the applicability that was noticed. So if we were to decide to do that, it would require additional public notice, both to DLCD and to those individual property owners. As well as additional planning commission review and recommendation. We really, you know, would need to study that a bit and haven't done the sort of due diligence that would be required for that, just to respond to some of those questions from before. And so now, you know, I'll go through a really quick explanation of the specific code amendment items. And I'll provide a general summary of what we've included in the proposal. We've expanded the scope of the utility section to include the streets, sidewalks, pathways and other street infrastructure section. To make sure essentially everything is in one place in the code and easy for developers to read and interpret. We've also amended the applicability section to clarify that the public improvement requirements apply to new dwelling units or increases in density. Or additionally, when the owner elects to connect to utilities. We've also modified this section recently to clarify our, since the initial public review draft was released. We modified the proposal to clarify that mitigation is not required for middle housing created through the conversion of a single family dwelling. And we also clarified that the standards here only apply to residential development, which is, you know, basically the, the scope of this proposal would only apply to residential non, not to non residential development. Because middle housing is just residential. We removed some language from the dedication, dedication of easements section to ensure our requirements are clear and objective. We also attempted to clarify as much as feasible which design specifications or plans will be provided by the city in items C and D. In the sanitary systems section, we actually added a, a new subsection under our newly reorganized sort of area where we have these requirements in the code. To clearly specify again, the designs and specifications we would require for sanitary sewer related improvements. We, you know, clarified that few things that would be important for applicants or developers to know regarding their sanitary sewer mitigation requirements. You know, the inadequate sewer lines may need to be upsized to, you know, receive adequate sewage flow. If a development does not abut an existing main, they would be required to extend it to it, et cetera. So those are really things that we just wanted to make clear and enumerate in the code. We also relocated relevant provisions from other sections of the code, again, for user friendliness and better organization. And removed some subjective language from the section in order to increase our compliance with state clear and objective housing requirements. Similarly, we added a new subsection for water systems and made more clear the references to designs and specifications we would require for those types of improvements. We clarified, you know, certain elements of the water system design, particularly that they must provide for extension beyond the development to adequately, adequately grid or loop the city system. That's a requirement that can be waived by the city manager. Inadequate water lines may need to be upsized if needed and, you know, essentially we're relocating things and reorganizing things just for convenience and ease of interpretation. There is a new subsection that I mentioned a little bit earlier, streets, sidewalks, pathways and other street infrastructure that provides again, some direction on which specifications and designs to use here. And again, we included some more detailed language to greater sort of objectify that language, make it less subjective, again, complying with the clear and objective requirements. And we also included more important clarifications related to unique site circumstances. So, you know, essentially something that came out of that was that requirement could involve constructing a sidewalk or a pathway across the streets. Across the street from the frontage of the site if that's actually directed in the plan. So we just kind of included some language here in the code to account for some of the more unique circumstances in, for instance, the public facility master plan. That would be relevant to this particular section, the TSP in particular. So we have another related subsection that kind of adds, you know, to that street sidewalks, pathways and other street public infrastructure, additional public infrastructure. Because there would be different sort of requirements for these when compared to utilities. Again, this is really just kind of a reorganization, rearrangement of what we have in the code to ensure that it's a little bit more clear. So this is section clarifies that all street public infrastructure is to be contained within the street right of way width. It references existing policy that directs how streets are to have different widths and components and areas identified as being within the urbanizing rural fringe. And just kind of, you know, includes a lot more specificity on which jurisdictions road width requirement is appropriate in different areas. And sort of exactly how those improvements must be constructed in relation to the roadway center line, et cetera. So just to put a little bit of context into what type of improvements we're talking about here, we've gone over this a bit before, so I'll, I'll make it quick. But the public improvements the city would require for a development really depend on the context of the site. In more urbanized areas, we would likely require right of way dedication, curbs, gutters, sidewalks or pathways if they're not already there. Water, sanitary sewer and storm drainage lines. And in certain rare circumstances, we would ask that unpaved or partially unpaved roads be paved. The city maintains different standards for what we refer to as a rural fringe, as I just mentioned a moment ago. And that includes the city's urbanizable fringe and newly annexed areas. So in those areas, we might require pathways with drainage swales instead of curbs and gutters or gravel shoulder instead of a sidewalk or pathway. I'll also stress that we would not require these improvements in areas where they are not appropriate. So for example, if there are no adjacent properties with sidewalks, we would not require that a sidewalk is provided for that development based on our current policy. So this is just a table from the transportation systems plan that can sort of show the amount of required improvements that may be required. And how those can vary depending on things like the classification of the street, whether parking or bike lanes are located on that street. And other factors that are considered by the transportation systems plan. So you can see that the proposal has some clear and objective requirements, but it's not really fair to say it's a one size fits all proposal. There's a lot of sort of detailed planning in these, in these infrastructure plans that has taken place over the course of many years that we're hoping to defer to and to build upon with this proposal. Again, we're not proposing to change this, but really just to directly apply it to ministerial development for the first time. So just to kind of wrap things up here with the code amendment items. Item H is more or less housekeeping and maintenance, but really, you know, both of these items, I guess, are. But item H would add a new additional public infrastructure section, really a backstop provision to ensure that other required public infrastructure was not inadvertently omitted within the code amendments. There's also a new utilities required subsection that more clearly delineates that the new utility standards are triggered upon connection to a utility. Some other important clarifications that there's now a distinction between utilities and streets and other public infrastructure. So just, it's really how the code is organized mainly. We're requiring that utilities, well, we're clarifying that you must install utilities and service facilities such as TV cable underground. And we're clarifying that the width of easements is not related to city utilities established by, and it's established instead by the relative, relevant utility company. So again, a lot of reorganizations and clarifications in these two sections. I spoke about this a little bit before, but we also included the city engineer reduction or elimination exception. Which allows applicants to argue that the required mitigation is not roughly. is not roughly proportional to the extent of their project. So really, just kind of codifying the engineering department's existing practices when reviewing applications for conditions of approval, and allows for reductions when there's existing infrastructure that meets the standards. It's not the appropriate time to construct the public improvement, or the public improvements exceed the legally permissible rough proportionality threshold. So really, the process here is intended to avoid the need for applicants to file an application for limitation to design, which is the next step, and install public infrastructure that the city engineer concurs is not supported by the nature extent of the development. So this is kind of just a more simplified version of that sort of minor development process, and the next item that can allow that sort of challenge from the applicant's perspective. So that is item L, is that sort of a mitigation limitation process. And this, again, provides the city with further protection from allegations that the required mitigation is not roughly proportional to the impacts of a proposal, and allows applicants to make their case for a more proportional mitigation requirement using a different analysis. So it's similar to what we might do currently for conditions of approval, really. All right, so items M and N are really about review procedures, and again, housekeeping and maintenance primarily, and I won't go into them too incredibly much. Just kind of separates, and this final item O, in combination with M and N, also just kind of connects our new requirements to the applicability section in such a way that it applies to ministerial development. I don't want to go into it in too much more depth. So essentially, these are, again, just kind of connecting pieces of the code, and the base concepts are long-standing city policy. So that brings me to the staff recommendation, and I will conclude with this next slide. So our recommendation is that council tentatively approve LU 22-0031 as recommended by the planning commission, and direct staff to return on June 6, 2023, with the final version of ordinance 2908, including findings and conclusions. And so that kind of covers us with relation to developments of three or more units. Now, when it comes to developments of two units or less, we're looking for, or I'm looking for direction, staff is looking for direction from you all on whether to initiate a project plan to evaluate doing that, to evaluate applying mitigation or public improvement requirements to developments of two units or less, such as single-family dwellings, accessory dwelling units, duplexes, et cetera. So that's our recommendation, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Okay. Questions?
Can I make one additional staff recommendation? I was involved in the drafting of this, you know, type thing. I guess, while we call it ministerial mitigation, it is, and I want to emphasize, it's more than that, okay? It is mitigation to address residential development. It applies, it will apply to partitions and subdivisions, providing that clear and objective standard that we spoke of at the beginning. The focus has been on ministerial, because we're trying to kind of catch up and fix that hole that developed as a result of the middle housing. But it is, it would be applied to all residential development. So the creation of all lots or all increased density, with the exception, at this point, as drafted, of two, of single or duplex. Continuing the current provision in the code. Staff, I did not feel we should take it upon ourselves to suddenly branch out and say, let's apply it to single-family dwelling. That's what we're asking for recommendations from council on, so I want to make that point. Two, the other point I want to make is the, there's really only been two comments, two public comments about this proposal. One comment was from DLCD, they raised three issues. We've addressed those. There's a state middle housing requirement dealing with conversion of single-family dwellings that can impose additional standards. We've included that, okay? They also raised the question of rough proportionality, and they said, "An analysis of impacts of rough proportionality among different middle housing types is an open question and has not been directly addressed in case law at this time." Couldn't agree further, couldn't agree more. We did not find that they raised any criteria that was applicable, and it was within the two units versus three trigger. That was within a policy decision of the council. And that's kind of, again, to the second question, whether you want to have a follow-on provision for that. And the third question, there was one term that I think desired impact, and that was taken out, as that might-
That's some of that subjective language, if you will.
That was not clear and objective?
Yeah.
Well taken, we did that, okay? The other comment was about density, parking, and traffic raised by a citizen, and maybe there were two of them. Those related to concerns about increased housing density. But again, that didn't include it, we're not including a development proposal, we're not changing the code on parking or traffic. The whole, the sum of this, I feel, is this merely continues what applicants have been dealing with for three units and above, and when creating lots, residential lots, since I got here, okay, in 1999. It provides the clear and objective process by referring to the plans, to our transportation plans. That's the same thing that the engineering department has been doing when they did before. We just didn't put it in the code. What we said was, you know, reasonable mitigation of impacts, alleviate that. But how do you determine that? Well, you look to your plans of what the infrastructure you want to have, and then you'd look at rough proportionality. So we began, continued the city engineer's right to take a look at those plans, obligation to take a look at those plans, reduce those mitigations where appropriate, given the level of development, and continued the opportunity to challenge that for the minor development process. So I hope that-
Yes. So what you're saying is we had to have two different things going on, and we had a code, and it wasn't clear and objective in regards to housing. And that's a requirement that we have, regardless of the type of housing, it has to be clear and objective. And so with these code amendments, they apply to all housing, and it gives us that clear and objective track that we had been missing in general, whether it's a minor development, a ministerial development.
Yes. Whenever you're, it's a policy choice as to when we're going to apply it. That's the second issue.
Right.
But when we are applying it, it needs to be clear and objective for residential development. And so that's what this proposal does.
That's right. And what's new about it, or what's new is the context. That now we have these, what had previously, would have had to have been a minor development, and what we've previously seen take place is part of larger developments anyway. When we think of, you know, townhome developments in LO, we don't have developments on our 7.5 lot, right? Where you see a block of developments, or you see an entire, like, of the Oak Ridge middle housing, I mean, you see a whole swath of units going up. So those are all minor, were always minor developments. So what we're seeing now is the potential, like, there is no example, right, of a triplex on a single-family lot in LO. The one does not exist, right? They're all larger. So it's a new type of, basically, form of development, I guess, that we're-
Right. We would have, well, we would have picked up a triplex as part of minor development and applied those standards. Now, somebody may acquire, have, a lot that was sort of envisioned for a single-family. That's kind of the base concept, but may now convert it to a triplex.
Right. Because those housing types, too, were limited to certain zones.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And I guess, by example, when we look at a two-lot partition, two-lot partition, we're talking about adding one dwelling unit. We applied mitigation requirements for this extra house, this extra dwelling unit. So we have experience in applying the mitigation requirements for additional dwelling units, even down to one.
That's right.
It's a policy choice for you as to whether or not, well, of course, when we're looking at partitions and subdivisions, again, there's sort of an implicit concept that there was going to be single-family. And so exactions were made, mitigations were made on that assumption. If you wanted to go higher than that, well, we'd look at more, you know, we'd look at that. We can't make that assumption anymore, and so the choice is, do we make that same, do we make that mitigation based upon the assumption that a person could put a quadplex on and develop the infrastructure accordingly, which may be more than you need in 90% of the case, because it's not going to be developed like that? Or do you provide for this opportunity to look at mitigation when the intensity rises? And we still will look at those, of course, when we're approving partitions and subdivisions.
Okay.
There are petitions, there are developments occurring on existing lots that may not have gone through mitigation analysis due to county or something like that. And so that's the number two question for you, as to whether you, you know, should we be looking at those even though the lot's been created? Because normally, that's when we picked it up.
Right. So to clarify, if someone comes in with a two-lot partition, do they still go through the, it's still a condition of approval?
No. Well, if adopted, okay?
If adopted.
They would be applicable to this standard, 5006008 utilities, for residential development that creates lots by land division or adds additional dwelling units. So a two-lot partition creates lots by land division.
Would we do it at that time, not when they come in for the building?
They would do it by that time, and we would apply these standards to that, okay?
Yes.
Now, the conditions of approval could still be imposed. I mean, we haven't removed that, okay? But when you're looking at residential development where clear and objective standards are required, I would, I'm reluctant to continue to apply those in addition to what we require under the standard, and we wouldn't need to, because we've already done that part of it. Conditions of approval, however, also relate, they also have other things besides mitigation for infrastructure, but, so that could be applied.
Okay. But it's at the time of the lot division?
It would be at the time of the lot division. It could, again, depending on, under these proposals, it would be the time of lot division. If you, if undertaking number two and deciding, depending what your policy choices are, if you move forward with that recommendation, depending on that, it could also be applied when the new building is created, okay? I originally started this concept in my head by saying, well, if you have a lot that was previously examined for mitigation, they would get a credit, much like we do for SDCs, you know, for that sort of thing. Well, fine. And some lots maybe didn't get a, didn't have a mitigation analysis, so they shouldn't get a credit. Again, that's your policy choice to be made, but these proposals continue, I just wanted to say, continue what we have been doing since 1999, is what's when I came here and before, for two-lot, you know, for two-lot partitions, okay? And for three-lot, three dwelling unit and above.
So what question, so are you saying that's an open question? Like, for instance, let's say there's a lot, one lot, that has improvements that were exacted at the time it was created. It has a sidewalk in front, it has curb, gutter, sidewalk. Let's take a Westlake neighborhood lot. It's got like the full thing. It's got a sidewalk, it's got curb, gutter, everything. Is that an automatic, you know, when they come in, let's say now they come in and they're going to take out the single-family home and put a triplex in there? Is it, clearly the exactions have been made on the lot?
We always start, we mitigate to the extent of the plan, okay? I mean, that's your cap, okay? What do you have in your transportation plans? What do you want your street and sidewalks, et cetera, to look like? We can't, we don't exact mitigate beyond that, because under rough, under Dolan and the rough proportionality, you have to first start with what's the governmental need? And if you have obtained the governmental need, if that's already existing on the ground, okay? Then there is no mitigation to be taken. You're not, you've reached your maximum mitigation requirements.
Okay. Good question. Okay, Counselor, thank you. Thank you, Evan.
I'm sorry if my passion comes through here.
That's very helpful. We're glad that you are here.
Attorney Boone, I have a question for you. Did I hear you correctly that all of the comments have been addressed in this proposal?
Oh, you'll, Long Range Planner Eric Olson, my apologies for.
Yes. We received comments when this went to the planning commission, and those were addressed at that time, and we haven't received any comments since this has been brought to the council.
So why approve it tentatively and come back? Because we've talked about this many times, why not just approve it?
We'll just have to adopt the findings, conclusions, and orders. So that's just the official language that we use when we say approve. It's tentatively approved.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think last time we talked about this, several of us said, we want to be consistent across everything. So whether it's one, two, three, four, five units, we want to be consistent. And I feel like we're taking many steps, and how do we accelerate this so we close all of these loopholes and we're ready to go?
Let's go with the EV plan.
Okay, then.
I hear you, and I think that's why they brought us both of these, both of these questions back, the approval of this and the question to go back and then close that, this new gap that's been created between one, two, and everything else.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, thank you.
I just want to say thank you that you guys pay attention to all this stuff, because it's very complex, and I appreciate your abilities, your skills, and must be your dedicated love for the subject matter. It's very well laid out. I guess my question is, with all this, will this speed up or slow down the process of the applicant?
It would speed it up by providing a very, putting it on paper, providing a very clear sort of roadmap to applicants, where there currently isn't.
Right. And then my only other question is, why would we not go through with number two? Two, I think, yeah, so. Will we just go?
Exactly. Well, yeah, well, we have to have the hearing.
Right. Yes, and I guess to emphasize that, you can't do number two recommendation at this point due to the scope of the notice.
Right.
Okay.
No, no, no. But I see no reason why we wouldn't go to-
So you would, you would-
Oh, 100%, yes. In fact, I would, yeah.
I guess I would just answer your question and say that one of the, one reason that you might not want to initiate a new project plan has to do with staff capacity, and we can talk about that when we put that together, but, yeah.
That's a city manager issue.
That's right.
Can I make a motion?
Well, no, no, no. We can hear you on that.
We do need to open, I am reminded we need to open the public hearing to see if there's any public testimony. I don't see any in the audience, but just formally we'll do that.
We're still asking questions.
No, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna make the motion.
Make the motion.
No, I'm kidding. No, thank you very, you know what I told you? I told you, if Evan looked at the staff, I won't have a comment, because I'm 100% sure that he knows what he is doing. And, you know, it's, these are complex issues. I was lost. Like, honestly, for example, when you were saying the default application of clear and objective for ministerial development instead of condition, even that, when I say, what does that mean? Like, you lost me there. I say, I don't get it anymore. Like, I come, I understand, and then I say, so the, so I'm glad that, you know, you spoke, you asked the question, and I was going to Evan's office today to get more things, but I heard when you was talking, it's always, I have that problem of clear and objective. How do we, is there something subjective when some sentences, you know, is it, is it on the code that you're gonna go and get anything that seems subjective in the code?
Right. And I guess I was, Luba has said that the clear and objective is, ascertaining clear and objective is the most difficult as all, because any word is not clear and objective. How we measure building height is always subject to challenge. I mean, so we strive towards clear and objective. I don't want to promise that it is, but we certainly strive to it. And to the extent we need to amend plans to get there, we find, we will. We are saying that you will build according to the plans and specifications that have been adopted, okay? And now we need to make sure those plans and specifications are clear and objective. And so that's kind of the ongoing, the next sort of, I think, next step. But that can be done internally through the, through specifications, and then when we look back at the plans brought forward, as to what the street width should be and that sort of thing, you know.
And Eric, I talked to a developer, too, even, and they were telling me that they were, their problem was not what we were thinking we'd prevent- that they were, their problem was not what we were thinking we'd prevent them from building, that it was not those mitigation and other stuff. That, what do you think? You think that's the truth?
That sounds consistent with the findings that we discussed last time, that the mitigation requirements aren't going to make or break a project. But, yeah, I mean, that doesn't really, I guess, necessarily speak to this other policy shift that would sort of expand the applicability of those requirements to developments of two or fewer units, which, you know, I'm not sure I could look at that as a housing production strategy, per se. But, you know, there are, you know, other sort of city policies that that could advance, so... But, you know, it's certainly consistent, and I'm not sure, you know, that this is the area where developers are begging for us to make changes so that they can come in and do middle housing. However, you know, there's always space to help, so I'm open to any ideas, of course.
It's not related, but we, no, okay. That's, I was, it was a question I wanted to ask. I will ask planning on that.
Okay. I had kind of, just a couple of specific questions. On the city engineer reduction or elimination section, it's page 14 of the code. It just says, it has a criteria. It says, "The city engineer may reduce or eliminate the specific utilities, you know, dot, 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 upon a finding that..." And then it has, you know, one, two, and three. I'm just kidding. Why would we say they may reduce instead of saying they will reduce or eliminate?
I think that's a code-writing preference that Deputy Attorney Boone made.
Okay. They may. I can't compel the city engineers. But they have the right to appeal, all right? I mean, there's the right to challenge. But they, they may reduce it upon a finding that, and I would go to subsection three. Well, existing infrastructure meets a standard. Might as well. Okay. We don't need it. It's not an appropriate time to connect it, so we'll do either a covenant or an LID.
Well, that was another, what does that mean, not the appropriate time?
It's a Saturday or Sunday.
So weather isn't correct?
I think Erica talked about, Erica talked about this last time. She was here, and she's sitting back there, so we could invite her up. But I don't want to drag this out too long. It's possible that actually having somebody do it for just a little tiny section creates downstream problems. So particularly around stormwater. If you think about it, if you put a stormwater buffer in or channelized stormwater, you might be routing stormwater someplace you're not ready to go. And so it may not be the time. You may want to do a system-wide improvement.
So if there's downstream impacts?
That's one example of deciding that doing it right now is a bad idea.
Well, and that leads to another question that, and I wasn't clear in the code how it worked, but if, I don't think anyone wants to purchase a property and then have the city, you know, come like 10 years later and say, "Oh, guess what? It's your turn to pay for the stormswell out front that we, you didn't know about, or the sidewalk improvement." I mean, Evan would be like, "Whoa, what..." And that was addressed in the code, I think.
They would know about it.
Well, they, yeah. Well, they probably should know about it. But it's just always better to have those improvements made and included when they...
Well, yeah.
The house, instead of them, you know, most people are going to be upset about that. They're going to say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, what the heck? I gotta build a sidewalk."
I mean, I kind of, I personally share the concept, if you're going to have a sidewalk, put it in.
I agree, yeah.
Even though sidewalk may not connect to your side.
Or do a fee-in lieu, something that, where it's taken at the time, you know?
However, but to the stormwater question, if you put a sidewalk in with a gutter on it, that water is going to go around.
For sure, sure.
And now you've got erosion issues that, you know, have been created. And so it may not be the appropriate time, or you may have to temporarily deal with that stormwater impact, I think, so...
I agree with you from a policy perspective. I mean, from a policy perspective, any improvements we can get done before the development takes place and before the first person owns, it lives, moves into the house, sells the house to somebody who hasn't read their deed, et cetera, that's better from a policy perspective. But as we all know, sometimes, policy doesn't work in the real world. And so you need to create the discretion for the city engineer. And that's why may versus will, so that you need to give the city engineer the discretion to say, "I understand gravity," or "I understand the way our entire system works." And a strict application of policy right now will create liability for the city. And that's what, if you install stormwater infrastructure and end up shedding the water onto a downstream property, what you're inviting is a lawsuit from the property owner who then has the stormwater flowing on their property. And so I guess I hear you, because I agree with you, that the time to get an exaction, I'm sorry, we're calling them mitigations now. An exaction is before anyone has, so, because relying on people to read their title reports isn't a great strategy. But sometimes, it's all we got.
But beyond the covenant for future improvement, doing the fee-in lieu, I'm just saying of those options.
Again, but that's a second, a separate policy question. If you're interested in that, we'll come back. We don't currently have, and I would say, before we go down that route, I want to make sure we also bring in finance, because that requires us to create a tracking system we don't currently have as well. I'm not saying we can't do it. I'm not arguing the point. I'm just saying, it's not as simple as saying, "Let's just go that way." It's got a whole bunch of stuff underneath it. Because I've worked in jurisdictions where we did that. And you have to be able to track it.
Right. Well, you'd be tracking these covenants, too.
We don't track, well, we do track covenants, but the owner also does that. I mean, the owner has it recorded on their, on their title report.
Yes. Yes.
Where else can I put it?
I know.
Mr. Mayor, there are a couple of things here. One is, there is an escalation path. So if it's a may and the city engineer decides not to do it, there's an escalation path that people can object to. So that's one. The other one is, anybody buying a property, they should do their due diligence and find out what are the requirements of the... They should do a due diligence. And if they don't, then I don't know how to help them.
This is not a new burden. Again, we currently do this. It's currently authorized in the code.
I know. But we're talking about expanding, you know, the scope of it. So just, these are just the topics that...
Okay. Those would be in the number two.
Just want to be clear, that's not within the scope of what we can approve today. So, yeah, we, yeah.
So when it comes, so my question is, in this code that we're adopting, the first preference, and how do we make, if it doesn't cause downstream issues or if it's not the right time, is to require the improvement at the time of the development? That's preference number one?
Right. That's a city, that's a city engineer.
And if they can't, what then happens?
If they...
The covenant? Is it fee-in lieu?
What do you mean by if they can't?
It's a covenant, I mean, it's right, in subsection two, okay, on page 14, E2, it says, "They shall record a covenant, or if permitted by the city manager, which is staff. In lieu of the covenant, they shall execute a waiver of remonstrance to file for an LID." So we have either of those tools available to make sure, to make sure that it can be done in the future.
And I guess that was my question, which tool we're going to use?
I don't think we've done an LID in, like, as we go in 20... I bet Evan's never processed an LID, so chances are we'll do the...
I have seen it in our archives. We have done LIDs.
They're very complicated, and actually, there have been court cases that waivers of remonstrance are difficult to enforce. And so the truth is, we're going to do the covenant. We're not going to, we're not going to hope that one day we're going to be able to perform a political miracle, which is what an LID represents.
A covenant would go to that property and say, "It's time to do it now, because we've got others to..." An LID is going to look at a broader area and say, "We need to make a whole big street improvement, and now we're going to exercise that and do the LID." And the waiver of remonstrance, all, I think all it does, under our code, it says, "If you, if more than a majority object, you have to delay it for six months by the city council."
But what is on LID?
Oh, this is a local improvement district?
They don't do it anymore.
Say that. I mean...
It's acronymized.
No, you're just asking about the...
Okay. The only other thing in that section under the may is under subsection three, when we get into exceed the rough proportionality, if the city engineer determines that, they must be reduced because the requirement would exceed rough proportionality. So there's a may and a must there, but we can't exceed the Dolan, Nolan-Dolan requirements.
Yeah. Essentially, this is something that they're applying for, so it's not a given that we would agree with their findings, even if they're saying that they meant them. So I think that's...
Well, that's the city engineer off-ramp. Now, if they don't, if the city engineer says, "I don't agree that it's roughly, you know, I don't agree, I think it's roughly proportional," and they want to say, "No, it exceeds rough proportionality," that's the second stage, that's the second off-ramp, where they can file an appeal, if you will, a minor development application to challenge that. And the process that was used here, which says, "We're going to file the rough proportionality hearing," for it, and they would provide a rough proportionality analysis. That's the same process that's been used in Lincoln City since, I think, 1995. I mean, it's, I didn't create that either, okay? I created nothing.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, that is helpful. I mean, just as we think about this conversation on a broader, I mean, that's a big topic. I don't think, I have not experienced, as I've been on the council, anyone coming in and saying, "Oh, it's time for you to build your sidewalk." I mean, so I know it's, if it's something we've done, I've never heard of us going out to someone and being like, "Time to exercise the covenant on your property, come build a public improvement 10 years, 15 years, 20 years down the road."
Well, there was the one.
And I'm sure they weren't happy about it.
Yeah, they, they...
Retrofiting infrastructure is never politically popular. I mean, you guys sat through the hearing about the sidewalk, the sidewalk on Hill and Ann Street in the, in the public right-of-way. So I think we are sensitive to that, but I also think that we need as many tools in our toolkit to retrofit a community that was developed over 100 years as we could possibly get. And that's what we're talking about here. You've got a range of properties with a range of requirements. And if you say that we're going to have a one-size-fits-all approach, we're going to run into ones where we don't like the result.
No one's saying we want a one-size-fits-all.
Yeah, so, no, I think, like I said, from a policy perspective, you're absolutely right, Your Honor. Do it before people live there. But in the absence of that being practical, I think we have to have a fallback answer.
Something, yeah. Okay. My other question is about the rural fringe. So I just, so we have a different standard for those areas that were identified on the map as the rural fringe?
That's correct. Yeah. That's, I think, in my TSP as well. So it's similar to how you would apply a different standard for, you know, arterial versus a major collector-type thing. So it's similar in that way, that it accounts for different contexts and doesn't just do a one-size-fits-all approach for everywhere in the city.
Right. And, but, just, I just wasn't clear on what the standard is on that, the fringe. I mean, so it's not, it's not curbing, not curbing?
So we, in those areas, we would ask for pathways and drainage spills instead of curbs and gutters, and then gravel shoulders as well.
Okay. I mean, that's honestly similar to where we have in a lot of areas of town.
That's right. Yeah.
Everyone loves the rural fringe. Okay. So it's not nothing, though? It's not nothing?
No. It's not, it's not nothing. No. I'm sure you could look at a, you know, pro forma for how much these cost. You'd see numbers adding up of some type at least, yeah.
Okay. Eric, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for... Well, we have to do the hearing.
Okay, what's the hearing?
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. We're going to ask if there's anyone here to testify. There is no one, aside from staff in the audience, so we're going to close the public hearing and entertain a, we'll entertain a motion.
So tentatively approve LU 220031 as recommended by the Planning Commission and direct staff to return on June 6, 2023 with the final version of ordinance 2908, including findings and conclusions.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. We'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Buck?
Yes.
Counselors Verdic?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Afghan?
Yes.
Corrigan?
Yes.
Wendlin?
Yes.
Mabup?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. And then staff is also asking for direction on whether or not to initiate the project plan to evaluate the similar mitigating improvements for two units or less. And we're seeing, okay.
Yes.
I'm giving that direction to pursue that plan. Okay. Very good. Okay.
All right. Well, we'll be back with the plan, and we'll discuss more then. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Good job, everyone. Okay. Information from council? Just want to, I just remind everyone that we have the board and commission interviews coming up the first week of June. So Quinn has been emailing, so just make sure to get those dates on the calendar.
It's all Zoom.
It's all Zoom. And, yeah, we've refined the process. It's going to be great. And then this Sunday, we have the API celebration at Millennium Park, which will also be great.
Oh, I just wanted to tell you that by tomorrow, probably, I will update you about affordable housing on Boone's Ferry. We already know almost who's gonna, we have, we picked three developers, like, one, two, three, and one you all know, the first one. You know, it's, you know, for now, Mercy is having, we have Mercy, we have Asyenda, we have, and also one who we know have very nice design that I can share after with council when we finish all this work.
I was going to say it again.
Yeah, not yet. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Counselor Africa?
Update from Chamber of Commerce. Lake Grove Business Association was voted earlier this year to become a committee of Chamber of Commerce, and that affiliation includes a board position. So congratulation to them. And also, there are several events coming up in May, June, and July. City councillors are encouraged and invited to these events. Please come. If you don't have a ticket, I can help you get a ticket.
Thank you.
Or Megan can get you even better ones.
Yeah.
Yeah. Megan?
Nothing from staff. Thanks, Mayor.
Evan, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. Okay. We are adjourned.